Do. I'm gonna do it day before you jump.
Soon as I gavel it.
Soon you gavel it.
Before the, okay, before the swearing in.
Second seat count.
Who's the, this thing?
Are you not gonna go and look at this?
And I'm gonna call the word of the town council meeting for Tuesday, April 26, 2022. It is 3:00 PM. And we begin, Rick.
Mayor and council, and those of you that are in the audience, before we jump into tonight's agenda, I'd like to just take a second and introduce our new finance director, Dave Byrd. Dave, he's there. Dave's second week on the job, so lives locally and his most recent was working with the community care clinic. And brings a vast amount of private finance experience to us, so we're real excited. And he's jumping in with both feet. Yeah, well, ways to go. So he'll look forward to probably not tonight doing financials, but soon he'll be.
Excellent.
In front of working with you.
Welcome. We're glad you're here. Yeah. So he's really good with math and stuff.
Oh, yeah. We had him do some multiplication.
Use a calculator.
All right. And now swearing in of our new town council members. Very exciting. Helen?
So we would ask that the three new members come out here and stand in front of the. And actually, you have at your station if you'd like to read along with me, otherwise you can memorize as you go.
Memory is good. Jay doesn't want to rely on his memory.
They're racking.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state the name.
I, Carol Sade.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter ordinances, laws, and regulations of the Town of Breckenridge.
Charter ordinances, laws, and regulations of the Town of Breckenridge.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the Office of Town Council.
The duties of the Office of Town Council.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
All right. Well done. Welcome, everyone. It's very exciting. Now to work, man. Get right to it. And we start with planning commission decisions for April 19 of 2022. Anybody have any questions?
I do have one question. On the Justice Center, there's reference to additional lot 74 gives us more room. Did we acquire additional?
For the town, the town actually owned a piece of property, which is a strip along the northern boundary of that site. And so we are incorporating that into the site, which will allow additional density, correct?
Yeah.
We quartered it from the national forest in the trade we did when we got the Clean Jumper condos.
So it, we feel, I think it referenced that in there, you know, provide a little more of a buffer also in between this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other things?
All right, anybody see a need for a call up tonight? It's a good way to come out of the gate with a call up just right away, Jay. Looking at you back or men. Okay, no call ups. I was really happy to see the Victorian Ridge exterior siding, though. I'm glad that went the way it did. Thank you.
Good catch.
Yeah. Yeah, because we, we actually made somebody tear siding off a building a couple of years ago. And it's good that we're staying in the same, same thought. So, all right, so planning commission, no need for call up. Legislative review, we begin with a ground lease with FERC. Rick?
Mayor and council, this will be second reading. There are no changes from the first reading, but basically this ordinance that will allow the town to enter into a long-term lease with FERC on a piece of property approximately one acre in size on the located on McCain parcel for the purpose of constructing a new, their new kind of corporate flagship building site at that location. And this is a 75-year term on this lease.
Thank you, Rick. Questions? Dick?
Question, um, you know, if this is directed at Mark or Shannon, um, did I know at our last meeting when we spoke about this, I had wondered about site planning, just to ensure that, you know, we've got ample room and inability to orient a, a next phase, another potential building for, you know, what we hope will be a childcare center or other uses.
I think of this layout that we've approved with FERC leaves plenty of room for the child's care. We've considered it in the circulation and where we're putting the driveways for the proposed FERC development, so I'm confident we can get that childcare facility in there.
In circulation will be good and all that. Great. Thanks, Shannon. Really appreciate it.
And just to remind everybody to make sure we're on the same page, that we kind of, when the council said we want to set that site aside and for childcare, we, we kind of figured that there won't, you know, there was a potential for three pads there that we were looking at, and we think that's going to be very difficult. So it's probably really just a FERC site and then this other site is the way we're gonna secure proper circulation, et cetera. So.
Well, then maybe that gives us some options to do a little something else around the childcare piece.
Yeah. Do you think that where that parking, or sorry, it's not the parking, it used to be the pond, but we can't build anything on it? Did we include that in James' land for snow storage?
Uh, no. It's included as something, though, right?
Open space?
Park. Yeah.
So it will be a little bit developed. Gotcha. Okay.
Grass.
Babe shot.
Water.
Sorry, James, I tried.
Then we would have just taken it from somewhere else. We weren't doing them any favors. The questions. All right, good for second reading? Excellent. Ordinance updating Clean Indoor Air Act, local counterpart for first reading.
Um, Mayor and Council, I, maybe it makes sense to talk to each of the five related bills if that's okay with you. Okay. Um, so most of these fall in the bucket of cleanup. The one thing that happens almost every year at the state is that liquor, tobacco, and marijuana change. And so we found some discrepancies in the 2019 changes in the Clean Indoor Act. And then we noticed some changes that needed to be made from 2020 through 2021. So most of this is cleanup. I'll highlight some of the things that I think you should be aware, because it's dense and I reorganized to try to get alcohol, tobacco, all in, and marijuana, all in one chapter, making it easier to read. But the, the most significant change is that in the last session, retail tobacco licensing started to look more like alcohol as a dual licensing scheme. So it made sense to move it out from the clerk and put it into the licensing authority because they, they're treated so similarly now. The impact on our retail tobacco is licensees is not, there's no significant impact. It's just a change in the process. And then the other thing that we did was repeal a provision in our general offenses for minor in possession of tobacco. I laughed with Judge Ellen that we probably don't heavily enforce that sort of thing here. So again, it's not going to have a big impact, but it is a good policy change to make. And Chief Baird and I discussed this and he is on board with that as well. And then we wanted to add a local counterpart for what's considered festival permits. And so those are the substantive changes in these five bills. We, even though they're related, we need to separate them out because there's different topics. If you have any questions about any of that, please let me know.
Questions? Festival?
Yeah, no, no question but a comment. I think we should pass this tonight, but this has to do with the festival piece of it. And, you know, I, if we don't pass it, then the states, it's going to default to the state and they're gonna do it for us. So. But I do think we should revisit this piece of it in the near future, maybe run it by the events committee. And, you know, and I think festival and, you know, the way this is written, it's multiple liquor, liquor license holders. You know, to me, this is a large alcohol-related event. And I kind of think we want to at least give some thought and have some discussion around possibly adding some teeth to this down the road. But I don't think it's something we can knee jerk and do quickly tonight. So I think we pass it as is tonight and then put it on a work session agenda sometime down the road, near future, down the road to, to, to really think about and talk about and get some input from staff and probably input from the event committee as well. And see if there's some language and some more teeth we want to put in this.
I, I couldn't agree more, and I'm glad you raised that. We would like to do that, too. We, we made that decision to try to bring it forward just so that we have something in place.
Oh, we need to. When I see the defaults to the state, I totally agree with you.
Yep. No, we would like to do that as well. So that's, that's a good point to make.
Other questions?
I have one, Kirsten. In the Clean Indoor Air Act, it says that the law prohibits smoking in most indoor areas. And, oh, sorry, at the smoke-free entryway of 15 to 25 feet, except where local regulations permit a smaller radius as Breckenridge does?
That's right. You were grandfathered, and it is a policy decision that if you want to talk about and change, you can. But because Breckenridge had the radius in place at the time in 2019, that the, the state law radius changed, the state grandfathered in local communities, but you could go back and make the entryway radius larger at, to the 25 or, or more.
You know off the top of your head what our radius is?
Yeah, I think it's 15. Yeah.
It was small because of our narrow sidewalks. I remember the discussion, if we made bigger, if we made a bigger radius, we'd push people out in the roadway.
Yeah, it's sidewalks and alleys. The alleys often.
That was, that was the, that was the real challenge with, at the time that we did that, when we first drafted that. And I don't know that it's, I mean, it's, it's not something that's really enforced a lot. But you'll see people just lingering outside doorways, you know, unfortunately, but still.
I don't feel super strong. I was just very surprised that we had a smaller radius.
That was really, it was because of our narrow sidewalk areas. Yeah.
We started with zero when we passed the law originally. For that reason. Um, the flavored tobacco bill, what, what does that bill look like from there? And does it look like a ban or?
You know, it, it, there, there's a huge effort to, to tank that bill. So there, they, you know, I, I did not check this week. I don't know if Chief Baird knows. But the last time we checked, there was an amendment to say that you could sell menth, cartons of menthol in a vending machine, just in an attempt to make it not pass. So it, so it's been fluctuating. I don't know. I do think that people who have given a lot of thought to it believe that it should be a statewide preemption sort of thing from like a legal perspective and a good bill drafting perspective. So I don't know. But we will keep an eye on that. We may need to come back and, and do something.
It is something we talked about ad nauseam about the child attractor. So.
Yeah, right. Yep.
Anything else? Okay. All right, everybody good with these for first reading tonight?
Yeah.
You ready for this? It's a lot.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Municipal Court Judge Code Amendment Ordinance also for first reading.
So one of the things that I hope that you will maybe appreciate or accept is that I'm trying to do a little cleanup along the way. So here, we, you know, I talked with Judge Allen about this as well. There's some provisions in the code that just are so outdated. One of them is this requirement for a bond. There is a state law that says that you can waive that requirement. And because we aren't doing it in practice, I just thought we would clean that provision up and then made some changes to some of the language about the structure. So again, that's just a cleanup. And unless you have questions, I don't think you need to spend too much time on it.
Does he currently have $500 bond with the town?
No. I don't have $500 to my name.
Any que, any questions? All right. Appointment of Municipal Court Judge by resolution.
So this is another one that I, I just think I'm trying to bring things up to maybe best practice. I've been so appreciative of the people in the town that are accepting of making changes, because this is dramatically different, I guess, in process than in the past. But it's approving by resolution and a contract that puts the judge on par with the manager and the attorney. If, do you have?
Buck wanted to say a couple of words if he could before.
Oh, he always does.
He likes that.
Everybody good? And any questions on the legislation?
Yeah, it makes sense to me. Yeah, that's fine.
Judge?
Oh.
Nice to see you.
Mr. Mayor, it's great to see you. I'll tell you, it's, I appreciate getting reappointed. I'm maybe a little premature on that. Yes.
I got your back, Buck.
By the skin of the teeth or something. I really thoroughly enjoy working with the town of Breckenridge. A great staff, great people to work with and with all of you. The last two years, the big thing has been dealing with the COVID challenge and keeping the court functioning. And we did that through a lot of waiver and guilty plea by mails, telephone types of conferences, pre-trial conferences and all of that to.
Buck, can you talk a little closer?
Okay.
Closer to you.
Okay. To accommodate just the, the fact that the town offices were shut down and most people didn't want to come in and be around people. And actually Helen, Tara, Danny, Angie, and Bob kept the thing running. And then every couple of weeks I'd come in, create confusion, and then leave. One of the interesting experiences from the whole COVID thing was with us all working together and kind of relying on each other. There was a real bonding process that occurred that probably we were bonded to a degree, but we became just that much closer bonded because of sharing the, the unique situation that it was. And what we've, what we saw is much more people were handling things. We would prefer to handle things by mail, over the internet, waiver and guilty plea by mails and all of that. And so we don't have as many, we haven't had as many people coming into court, but we've been handling a lot of it, the bureaucratic shuffle, I guess you'd call it, but lots of waiver and guilty plea by mails. And I don't know whether that will be permanent or whether we'll come back to the other. I always enjoyed having people come into court. But I think that may be a thing of the past. It's really interesting. But we'll, we'll see what that long-term effect is. So anyway, I just, I thoroughly enjoy working here with you all and thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge. Any questions for the judge?
I got one with the, with the mail-in.
Legal advice from the judge on Tom Times.
No, 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 that's, that's why I got my own attorney. He's out in the audience. With, with the, with the mail-in and the video and all that stuff, I mean, part of your job in the past was kind of evaluating people, kind of getting a sense of the, of the mental health Feng Shui of the community. Is, is this something that you can, you can't do it through the mail? And I just wondered how, how you feel the community is, is doing mentally? And if there's anything in your courtroom that you can kind of hot button or something?
There are a lot more people under a lot of stress. And what I try to do is if a person comes in and pleads not guilty, and we set it for a pre-trial, provided they present themselves at all appropriately, for lack of a better term, I suggest they come in in person to do the pre-trial, to do the disposition, because normally that works to their benefit. There are, every once in a while, somebody that you go, maybe you should just handle this by phone. But for the most part, it, it's better to have the people come into court. And also because we have kind of a luxury of time, can spend a little more time with the person with each case. And a lot of times, we'll start with the matter before the court and then they'll mention something and then I'll go back to it at the end. So that, yeah, I was listening to you and I'm, I'm interested in what's happening in your life. And the one thing that I forgot to say is, I was checking my records. I believe I first started judging here full-time in 1998. So it's been a while.
Wow, that was like wrestling was a big.
Yeah, yeah, wrestling and, yeah.
Anything else with the judge? Judge, thank you. Thank you for everything you do for us. We truly appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much, sir. I really enjoy working with you all.
All right. And then finally, a request to approve compensation for outside counsel.
So, so this is a requirement of the charter that you approve the rates of our special counsel. We don't have any big ask of Kissinger enforcement right now, but they are, they specialize in utilities and franchise, and it was time to update their agreement.
Questions? Nope. That's an easy one. All right. Thank you. Public projects update.
Get all the engineers down here.
Big department. Dating group.
Well, thank you, Jeffrey.
Almost sorry.
Hey, everybody. I have one addition to the memo. Aaron had asked that we pull analytics of how many clicks we're getting for our Breck Rhodes website. If you're interested in that reporting still.
You don't have to do that.
Great. Perfect. But we did get 422 clicks on the website since April 11th.
The what, what?
The website where we're sharing all the information on reconstruction.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they're unique.
Was 322 unique. Which I think was great. It was higher than we were expecting.
Yeah, that's really good.
That was all I had to add. So we can take questions if you have any questions on the memo or projects.
Are you at all concerned that the goose, the torn projects, I mean, we're, we're still okay, right? We're just, don't make up the time, maybe?
We're still on schedule currently.
Okay.
Because of this now?
Yeah, I mean, she just said they're delayed.
They started early in anticipation.
Good.
Of this long season. So we haven't had any delays yet that are put, that are pushing on the schedule, but we'll keep you informed if it starts to push.
Hey, I have a question. Now with the new parking structure, I just noticed that the, the skier drop-off, you know, by the transit center in the gon, in the gondola, that's no longer there. That's part of the parking structure. Where, do we have a, is there a skier drop-off at that area?
So the whole east row in the surface lot is signed for skier drop-off.
To the pathway.
Okay.
Pulls up by the path.
So, so towards the parking structure?
Towards the river.
It's a river. So if you came in, it'd be on the surface parking, kind of take a left as you come in and just drive towards the river and park along there facing the river.
Okay.
I don't know how many spots.
Is it pretty well signed?
17 spots for drop.
Is it pretty well signed?
I think it is. It's indicating skier drop-off. It has the time limit on it.
I, I couldn't find it.
It's super well signed, but I think we talked about that it's maybe not the best location, or maybe it is, and it's just not ever going to be a winter location. But it's just so hard to get in and out right there. But if you want people to come in and be quick and get out, then having them right in front of the door or right in front of the exit from three till four is a really tough spot, too. You wait 15 minutes just to pull out.
That's where Vale wanted it, but we can work on what would be a better location. I think Egress is tough right now anyway for that last season. Hopefully that loosens up quite a bit with the right in, right out. That's going in.
Yeah.
Or else we would even.
Once around about the right in, right out, we want to evaluate all this.
Yeah, still better than the one on Peak Gate.
Yeah, that's the truth. I mean, the problem is people still don't pay attention. They pull into the Porsche.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It's constantly.
Yeah, I, I think if we had the opportunity to staff heavier there, that could help. But.
One day.
One day.
Other questions on projects?
On the Watson Avenue roundabout, are we pretty sensitive about that project not kind of impeding the wetlands and being kind of a healthy project without bleeding into the, the riparian, riparian area?
Yeah, so we fenced off kind of the edge of the limits, put in stormwater controls, and then we're keeping it under the 0.4 acres that we're mitigating for. Yeah. So I've been checking for that and we, we're conservative and offset it a little less than that. So.
Yeah, and you're keeping an eye on it.
Yeah.
Best practices.
Yeah.
I mean, it is gonna look to people, right? We know that we got in there and infringed that first, like you said, 0.4, but, you know, we are making that up.
Mitigating that, yeah.
Cool. Many combat comments so far on this or coin?
I have not gotten any negative feedback. I think everybody feels informed. I think the variable message signs did their job, especially in coin. Because as soon as you put those up, we started getting a ton of calls. So I'm hoping everybody who's impacted, was aware, knows now what's going on. And I am presenting at the BTO meeting on tomorrow, I guess, to share the information to another audience to hopefully get our visitors informed.
Excellent.
That's great. Smart. Thanks for doing that.
All right. Anything else? Excellent. Thank you. Mobility, Matt? Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. A couple mobility updates. So as you can see in your.
A couple mobility updates. So as you can see in your packet, high traffic numbers for the month of March, pretty big decrease that we're seeing in the beginning of April here. So while we saw some pretty good record numbers for the last two months at Tiger Run, Tiger Road, we saw a pretty good decrease here in April. So probably felt that around town. The new temporary traffic counter has been installed at Highway nine and River Park Drive. It's just north of River Park Drive. So currently it's going to collect local traffic as well there. So that is a temporary one. We're working on sourcing the product to be able to install a more permanent one just south of River Park, River Park Drive. Hopefully later this fall. So hopefully that will get, we should start getting some information on that here on the next report with the, with the counter that we have installed. Free ride wa, ri, free ride wise, masks are no more, as you probably all have heard and noticed. They aren't required by staff or the public on our buses. We are still going to provide masks in the back of our buses for the foreseeable future, just for anyone that might want to use one. The grand room is also reopened. So that's open to the public to much fanfare. So that's exciting. On the next note of free ride, we're partnering with Tamara and the Breck Create team on a fun program called Transit Mix. It's going to place musicians around town in the month of August. And it's going to be, they're going to be placed at the specific bus stops, far north and far south and ice ring out on the Purple Route, kind of strategically placed to kind of get locals and to get visitors to utilize our buses and kind of go explore where they take you trailheads all around town. I think it's a pretty cool idea. With that, the town staff is leaning towards allowing one small wrap to be placed on one of our yellow and white, white free ride buses so that we can kind of market the idea simply. So expect to see that in the coming month or so, and that'll be in the month of August is when that program's going to go.
What's the program's name again?
I believe we're calling it Transit Mix.
The rap is we're not promoting any one entity or event. We're more trying to use it as a promotional for increasing ridership and awareness of transit. So, you know, we've, we stay away from, and we checked with Tom Dev and he doesn't really get into our, our, you know, our advertising code thing for that.
Musicians on the bus, no?
We, we did discuss that. That is on the table. We do have some interest in doing it. We also have some, some concerns. So we will probably circle back on that for next year. We'll see how this program goes and then kind of go from there.
Cool.
Yeah. Switching gears to parking, parking structure and North Gondola lot are free as of yesterday through May thirty-first. And then also the month of May is locals appreciation month. So May first through May thirty-first, all town-owned lots will be free as well. So street parking remains the same. Still need to pay for that, but May one through thirty-one, town lots are free. Last but not least, sustainability. We had a great open house earlier this month. Thank you to everybody that showed up. We had a pretty good turnout. There was a lot of really good feedback given and we're excited to kind of digest all that information with AECOM. They should be reporting out to us on that information fairly soon. And then they're also going to be reaching out to council members to schedule one-on-ones with you all and them to kind of work through your ideas and their ideas. So you should be seeing that in the next couple of weeks. And their next report out will be June fourteenth at the council meeting. That's all I have.
Have a question for Matt. I know we talked about last meeting. I can't remember. When, when are we going to start allowing dogs on the free ride?
We are working on it. It was kind of a, I was going to leave it off today. Mostly we are just waiting for one more data point to come back on whether our recommendation is for or against. Right now, we're very much leaning towards allowing it. Just really waiting on the idea of liability. So.
Sir, so cover us for things like that?
The thing we're waiting on.
Cause Cresta Butte allows it, right?
Of course.
So I'm guessing there. We're in fork, I'd say.
Yes, and.
They're not any entity there, you know, district, whatever district, but.
Yeah.
So I, we'll probably get there. Like anything, they're going to tell you, right, that it's gonna, there's always a chance for some liability.
Jay? Matt, when, when does the trolley start running again?
It started when we switched over to summer service. It did start last week. We have had to pull it a couple of times mainly due to some construction issues, but it should be running for the most part every day moving forward. Again, we are starting some main street construction tomorrow, as you probably see on the signage, which may cause it to not run. So we'll post on the Free Ride app when we can't run it, but it is running right now, eleven to eight daily.
Matt, when you guys have that meeting, the sustainability group and AECOM, will you guys maybe type up like a summary of what was discussed and main points and put in the packet?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Are we going to do a recap of the parking season, in particular the structure?
We will. We're working through the annual parking report right now. We're running the month or the year, May one through April thirtieth. So at the end of this month, basically we're working on it tomorrow with data points we have. And then we'll finalize all of, all the data points for, I think, presentation in early June.
Awesome. Thanks, Matt. Anything?
I'm gonna get in front of you early.
Yeah.
To start deciding on some.
Okay. Anything else for Matt? Thank you.
Thank you.
So was there anything in particular you wanted to cover in that?
I just want to know. I want to know usage and.
Breakdowns.
Yeah, just the breakdowns, you know, just curiosity more than anything, you know, and then going forward, talking about our, our plans to try to get.
And you may.
You know, we have. Basically, our first year lease on that structure ends May thirty-first.
Okay.
And then it, you know, then it runs from June one to May thirty-first every year on that structure. And we have forty-five days after that to settle up that first year. So we're working through all those final points right now on expenses and how we're doing, calculating everything and all that. So.
I, I think probably everybody's got a different opinion of what was successful or not. So I'd just like to see the numbers and, you know, see what everybody thinks. Yeah, that's it. Nothing, nothing different than what you probably already have.
No, but we have, we do have some definite questions that we want to get in front of the council.
Thanks, Matt. Housing and childcare. Kimball Krangle.
Laurie, I brought a different friend.
It's nice to see you.
I am so excited to be here. I don't know if you can tell, but it's really fun. So hi, everybody. Oh, yeah. Left my mud outside, though.
It's not easy to do.
So we wanted to discuss with you guys today. We had agreed with Gorman on a two million dollar net zero loan. And the basis of that has gone up a little bit, and I'm going to let, let Kimball take it.
Can we refresh the council just a little more on that too? Because part of the proposal when we did Alta Verde two, which is netting a hundred and seventy-two. On there was that we were doing a loan to them and it was going to be, what we had penciled in was six, it's a six million dollar loan and up to two million was kind of penciled in depending for additional for net zero. Now, you may recall those of you that were on there, that was that conversation. And so it's really now we were up to eight million and now we have some new information.
Yep, that's right, Rick. So we put that, the deal terms of that together over the late summer. And then we signed that up, I believe in October of twenty twenty-one. And what we were going off of was information that we had gleaned from Alta Verde Phase one. As we worked through our design process, we followed, and forgive me, I'm a developer, I'm not an engineer. So you can have all sorts of fun with that if you'd like, as a note. But as we worked through our design element, one of the tenants that we put together as a design team was to say, we need to get better than we were at Alta Verde Phase one. Alta Verde Phase one is an amazing development with its net zero. It's designed to be net zero. It will be net zero. But we didn't pay as much attention to how do we actually minimize energy consumption before we offset the energy? And I think we're all getting smarter about climate change and realizing that one of the big goals is not just to offset what we use, but to actually reduce what we're using in the first place to reduce the demand on the system, which just has all sorts of other benefits. So we followed what we're calling a performance-based design at Alta Verde Phase two versus a more of a prescriptive design at Phase one, where we just followed the boxes to check and did the calculations and you set it off with PV and ta-da, you're net zero. I mean, that's a very simplified developer explanation. But on Phase two, we won to many people's, well, I know that, I don't even know how to say that. We went three-story in some cases on Alta Verde Phase two and you lose, you lose roof area when you do that. You gain lots of other things. And the design, and the design is amazing. And it will look great, but because you're, you're increasing your density, you lose roof area per unit. And at Phase one, we had all two-story buildings. We could basically find enough roof space to offset the energy demand with the photovoltaics on the roof of the building and the garages. Here, when we started saying, okay, it's a hundred and seventy-two units, this, the square footage of the building is much bigger as a total versus Phase one. And we started saying things like, we need to get better on the building envelope. We need to get smarter on our hot water systems. We need to get better on the R values that we're building in. We are going to end up with what I consider to be like an A-plus product for the things that we know today. That is a very different approach than what we did at Phase one. And in part, we're spending more money on some systems like our HVAC systems. We're going to do an ERV system, which is like an electric resistance ventilation recovery system, which is just, it's a better system than a VTAC or a PTAC, for example. We're also changing up our hot water heating systems, and this is all an electric building again, to where we'll have one almost centralized. It, it, it will feel, it, it won't, but it, to the layperson, it seems like it's a boiler per building, but it's not hot water. It's electric heat. Whereas, you know, before we were doing singular water heaters per unit, and there's lots of reasons that we're getting smarter in the design as we go through this. And so since we completely changed the approach, the formula that I used in October twenty twenty-one kind of got chucked out the window. We know we're doing this for the right reasons. And quite honestly, if you tell me no today, we'll figure it out because we know we're doing it for the right reasons. I don't have the full breakdown of the numbers in front of me, but it's about four point eight million that the total net zero package is going to cost us. And we had agreed on two million. If we just say to the town, can we figure out a way to increase it to, I think it's three point two seven, that pays basically for the photovoltaics that are required to offset the system and we'll, we'll figure out the other piece. And so Mark Truckee had wisely asked me to, to look at what the demand differences would be if, over time, given the net zero approach that we're taking on this building. If you look at the Excel solar demand program that we can be in post-completion, and these are all in today's numbers, right? So there are assumptions built into this versus a typical utility allowance that HUD publishes every year for Summit County. Per year will charge, tenants will pay about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in total less on electricity because demand is so reduced versus, and then over ten years, that's one point four million, over twenty years, that's two point eight million. So there will be benefits, not only to the climate, not only to the common areas, you know, that aren't the tenant responsibility, but then there will be direct tenant benefits as well. Your, inside of your apartment home will feel more climate-controlled all the time. The air change per hour is going to be greatly reduced over zero energy-ready home standards or Energy Star standards. And so we're, we're really setting a bar here and I do believe in what we're doing. It's just, it comes with a price tag. On top of that, you know, we're not immune to the supply chain issues and the costs that have been associated with that. PV just has gotten more expensive over the last two years. So.
And would you, I just want to confirm that this is wrapped in this additional one point two seven, I guess, that we would be. So we'd be at like nine point two seven or whatever that number is. We're gonna, dude, that's still considered a long-term loan that eventually comes back?
That's correct. All the funding that you'll put in for the PV and just the subsidy is a loan.
Which is important for us. Another thing I would remind the council of is this, this type of money we're spending, I think, is, is money we were putting in. You know, we committed to more, to offsetting energy use based on, you know, if we had ramp and with, you know, with, with the outdoor energy that we did for the parking structures.
Yeah, we're going to end up building a one point two, what's the, what's the acronym? One thousand two hundred and like thirty kilowatts of photovoltaics or one. Yeah, it's huge. It's, it's twice the size of your solar farm next door that will just be on top of Phase two.
Boom. That's awesome.
It's a little intense, but yes, it's awesome. And I mean, I think if, I don't know if Jesse Burley's in the room, but you know, meeting this pathway and this performance-based building in climate zone seven, I think is, is pretty phenomenal. And the fact that it's just going to be such a reduction in energy really points to the full team effort that's behind this. I mean, we have a great design team and engineering team that has been really putting their heads together to the call of, we need to get smarter about how we're doing net zero. It can't just be a formula.
I think that's great.
Yeah.
I really do. Questions?
Money well spent.
Remind me the term of the loan?
Term of loan.
I want to say it's thirty to forty years.
It's a long time, but. Yeah.
It's interest-bearing.
Yeah. I mean, it's a good return back into the fund down the road.
Exactly.
Which we never had before.
Yep.
I really appreciate the innovation. I think not just for our community, but I think this is a bold way to go for Breckenridge. And that's exactly what we expect of ourselves and our partners. So thank you for doing that.
I appreciate your enthusiasm with, you know, going forward to. I, I just, and, and to Kelly's point, I, I love being on the forefront, but there's some risks that early adopters just inherently have. Have you thought about the risks of these new technologies and what the unknown costs are if the manufacturer doesn't make it? If it's a brand-new technology and how to, if things down the line that I think we all want to see like that new technology that makes us more efficient and doing the right thing. But looking at it more wholly, what are the other risks and how are you mitigating those?
That is a great question. It's great to see you on council, by the way, versus planning commission. You're tapping into the anxiety of our team right there with that question because as an early adopter, you do face more risk. And I will say, the biggest, the biggest compass that we have is, you know, I always say, we can't get so aggressive with our demand-side analysis that, you know, we just say to our future residents for three weeks of the year, I'm sorry, you're cold. Just grab another blanket. Like, that's not the answer that we're allowed to give or would want to give. And so we do have on some of our earlier versions of code compliance and, and the Summit County Energy Code is also, is aggressive in ways. And so we've had to kind of look at this elsewhere too. If you're doing a PTAC or a VTAC, for example, you do have some redundant electric heat and we'll have that here as well. So that, you know, at, at a certain temperature degree, the reliability of the system that you're putting in starts to fail. And you do have to put in some redundant measures. And you do have to put in some redundant measures, meaning at an X-degree temperature, you know, Part B kicks in. That's one of the ways. This, this hot water heating system is a newer product for us. It's been tested in different countries quite a bit and it's been proven time and time again at high climates. The US is not cutting edge when it comes to climate issues. And so, you know, oftentimes we are the leaders in that. You know, we'll have to deal with something if something comes up, but we have tested out as much as we can and we have gotten comfortable with it as the future, you know, reliable party that's going to get all those phone calls if something does go wrong. I mean, that, the, I've heard the argument before that the only way to bootstrap against all risk is to run a gas line to the building and be ready to pull out your all-electric system and plug in a gas system. And we have taken a stand as a design team and as a developer that, you know, we want to figure this out and our partners are in this with us and we're going to figure it out. We've done all-electric buildings before and they've been holding up. So we feel confident in the system that we've engineered. But that is, I think, an issue for anybody that is leading some of these newer technologies is to make sure that they're founded in pretty practical applications, you know? And it's a fairly simple system once you break it down.
Right, thank you. I appreciate, you know, the fact that they do have track records and again, just commend taking a two-pronged approach of not just trying to offset the energy, but to have less energy. So thank you.
And there's definitely a benefit to designing the envelope to be net zero as opposed to designing your building and then trying to convert that to net zero. So I think that this is going to be a lot more successful in that realm as opposed to, as opposed to trying to figure that out on the backend.
Anything else? All right, how's everybody feel about the increased loan amount? I'm supportive. Yeah. All right. Awesome. It's great to see you.
It's so good to see you all.
One of the things I think is real important, especially in our world today with housing, I really want to make a big deal about kicking this project off. So when, and I've talked to the council, at least Eric, about really doing a nice groundbreaking for Alta Verde, too. So when do you think that might be?
It could be anytime in July or August. So why don't I reach out and we can try to find some dates that work for folks, given that time of year? We could even push it into September without getting too or not. And don't worry, Jeffrey, we will not have plastic water bottles.
Oh, she heard you, man. She totally heard.
Very much noted.
Yeah, I think we make a big deal not only about bringing another 172 workforce units, but also the sustainability part. I think this is a good message that we should get out.
It's a great message, especially the way you're doing the sustainability. I think that's really important. Somehow we need to make sure that gets messaged properly.
Well, maybe at Mountain Towns, maybe you could present it.
That'd be really cool.
Great idea.
Well, everyone loves Kimball Krangle.
Kimball Krangle.
That might be going a little far.
Truth, we love you. All right, thank you. Anything else with housing or childcare?
We didn't have any minutes or anything from childcare or housing, but if you had any questions, I just wanted to come. Lori's on vacation, so you got me if you have anything.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Birthday, geez.
Share it with Mark. So once he's here for his, he has a lot more to do today.
Different years for sure.
Come here.
How many buy downs?
We are halfway to our goal, so 12.
Already this year, we probably in the last two weeks done six.
Well, in the last six weeks, we bought 10.
That's awesome.
So.
Housing helps picked up at all?
No, housing helps is still a little bit slow. We have a couple of new applications that we're working through and connecting with some people that just were on the fence. But it's, it's strange, buy downs go up and housing helps goes down. They seem to shift back and forth, which is good for us. But, you know, we'd like to see both of those programs higher, but we all know the prices of properties right now are really high. So if it's an acquisition type of venture for housing helps, it's a little bit more of a struggle. So we do, we have heard about some upcoming larger assessments at some of the condo properties and that does tend to increase our housing help. So we'll see if that happens this time.
How's the Frisco childcare?
It went great. Everything's been sent out and it's essentially done at the, at this moment. So we're just working on invoicing them.
Important part for us.
Yeah.
That's great.
I'm sure they'll have a couple of people that come in late or get into a center that they'll approve. But they were real appreciative that we all went to that siding scale and that we could do that as a team effort, so.
Fantastic.
Yeah, yeah, it worked really well. It's a great relationship.
Corey, on housing, recently I've had a few people ask about the potential for a maintenance incentivizing program for a deed-restricted stock. Is that still?
Yep, that was started back before COVID, believe it or not. And so we have unearthed that and are working towards that with, kind of with our guidelines altogether. So that would be part of our guideline program. But we've been working on that quite a bit for the last couple of weeks. So we're hoping to have it finalized very early summer. So that May-June-ish time period, because that's a good time for maintenance starting. So, yeah, it affects Wellington-Lincoln Park probably more than any other of the properties, but there'll be some availability for other neighborhoods to use the maintenance plan.
Corey, could we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's it, just thank you.
Could you throw that on the agenda for the housing committee? I've, I've gotten some good input first from some citizens on that.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll put it on for the, what month are we in, May? Agenda, we went back and looked, you know, because I think the town council's feedback was a lot of changing the, the year time period that we would allow for our different types of maintenance. And so that's what, that's the biggest evaluation we need to do.
You know, there's a new member of the housing committee, number eight, Todd Rankin.
Oh, you're on housing?
Not yet. We're talking about that momentarily.
Great.
Jay's too big.
We'll miss you, Jeffrey.
Anything else for Corey? Thank you.
Have a good night.
Committee reports, there were a couple of social equity and liquor and marijuana. Any questions?
Are we going to start having the minutes now? Yeah, that's great. I think that's really helpful. Thank you.
Ones that's going to be a challenge is like, BOSAC will always be a little delayed because they meet like last night, night before, there was a night before the second meeting. So you're going to have to wait two weeks to see those in the pack.
And now they're taping the, they're videoing or taping the recording.
Yeah.
So that's, that'll be available more quickly, right?
Good point. I'm not going to watch him.
Any other questions on the committee reports? All right, net taxable sales, Department of Finance.
Yeah.
Slow.
I'm going to do this for you one more time here. Let me get to it here.
The guy that knows.
Financials, when they're like this, when the first sentence is. But this is basically February, right? What we got in March. And it continues to be strong, especially in sales tax there, so. Well, we had some capacity restrictions last year, so, didn't we? Yeah, we did.
Yeah, through December.
Early 21.
Super strong compared to 19.
Oh, you're right. So. And
I mean, overall, 45% up on 2019 is.
Yeah.
Flagrant.
Said, why are we so busy? There's, there it is.
That's beyond inflation.
That is beyond.
And you saw, I mean, we're, this was, we expect March to be the same, right? You saw the March traffic numbers as a record March coming in on traffic, so.
Questions on financials?
Devilish short.
Yep.
But what we're working, so this is all the really good news and that. And so what we're working through, we'll have a meeting tomorrow to go over more is to, is to really look at where we're at on our year-to-date budget more. That's what we're doing internally. And I really want to, one of the things that Mindy, who is the contract person that's been with us now for five months or four, five months, and working with Dave on is looking at all of our different fund balance reports to really make sure that those are tightened up and good as we get ready to start our budget process this summer and looking at 23. Really, I want to be very confident, which I know you do too, as we go in there, what are those fund balances for each of those different funds that we have out there?
Yeah.
As we're planning.
I know a lot of this is legal, the way we set things up, but as you know, it's very confusing because we have a lot of in-and-out transfers from funds. So the more stripped down we can make it, reporting out to council, the better.
Yeah. That was for you. Yeah, I, I learned what GAAP is. Generally kind of.
Oh, I like that. We need, we need a, we need a kindergarten version of that so we don't have to do math in our heads while we're figuring stuff out.
No. But anyways, any questions on anything to do with what you see on the financials? That is a little slower, but there's no inventory in the counties, you know? And I don't know if you're going to top $11 million, Rick, like. Or do we want?
Right. Anything else on financials?
I mean, I guess I just think, you know, while this is wonderful for the town in a lot of ways, there's a lot of community members who are asking us to look at this and say, you know, how do we address some of the congestion issues that? And I feel like when you're looking at the budgeting and we're kind of taking the next step in that conversation, I feel like we're going to have to have some budget to use to address this congestion issue. And so I just hope that's top of mind when you guys are looking through, you know, where we are in the budget and what's going on.
Well, it is, and before we get to budget, we will address, we will start to address congestion. And so we're, you know, we're getting, we're finalizing, you know, a proposal from RRC to build the, that, this dashboard. So we're agreeing upon, you know, we've got a bid from them, which I think is reasonable, $25,000 and go in and build this dashboard, what those data points are to go in and do it and show the comparison over. I think most of our data, we're going back three, five years and some. I'm looking at Lucy a little bit to try to remember on this. Not all of our mobile data is only like three years that we have. So we, we can go back much farther in some of our other data points. But we need to answer the questions first and the who, what, when, where, why and how of all that congestion and what does it look like? And then we'll really be able to start then each one of those could potentially be a different strategy.
Well, then there's going to be some, I mean, there is the potential that this, this is an aberrant year or two. You know, coming out of a pandemic, losing restrictions.
We're still not out of it.
You know, and we're still not out of it. So you don't, you know, next year might be back to something more like normal, too. But, yeah, I mean, April's, April's still big. I mean, April's still monstrous, so, you know, who knows?
I think it behooves us to look at this and that we just are cautious, right? We're cautious on how we approach it because there are so many things that could be driving this. And the whys and the lack of international travel from, you know, with more local travel and all of, there's could be so many whys that we don't want to, we don't want to do anything that could have some unintended, far-reaching consequences.
Absolutely. We also don't want to spend any money that we may not have. I think that's another, you know, important thing is, I mean, this is a banner year. We have money to do stuff with, but we can't always count on, you can't always count on it until you see it next year, so.
Also, I think it helps to remind us all that though the, the financials are awesome, that same force that makes the, the money come in also makes the town often less livable for the people that live here. You know, the people that come here are digging it, you know, they're, they're, you know, they're, because compared to where they're coming from, this is Nirvana. But, and I think it's just good to be cognizant of taking some of the money, some of our profit and our revenue and, and putting it into things that, and we do do this, that increase the quality of life for those that, that are our workforce and our residents, so.
Okay, we're going to take a quick five-minute break before we get to the Tourism Overlay District Task Force reservate, recommendations. And we will start that at 4:15 since that's what was posted. So quick break, be back here and we'll get to it. Get to the Tourism Overlay District Task Force recommendations. Couple of things before we get started. First of all, I want to sincerely thank the members of the task force, Bob Barto, Abby Brown, Dick Carlton, Abby Epperson, Steve Fisher, Steve Gerard, Tajah Greer, Mike Hessel, Devin O'Neil, Kelly Owens, Jim Schlegel, and Michelle Zimmerman. So thank you all for your time and your effort in this. Just so everybody understands, today is the opportunity now for the council to get the report from staff about the recommendation to ask questions and then to send staff off to begin crafting legislation. We will not be taking public hearing during this work session today. There will be plenty of time for that going forward as the legislation gets drafted, which will, I'm not even sure when those, then those, when those will come up, but that will, will come. You can always send comments to mayor@townofbreckenridge.com, which of course we've gotten a ton of over the last year now that we've been talking about that. So with that, Mark Truckee.
Thank you, Eric. Good afternoon, council and new council members. So thank you for pointing out the task force members' names. They worked hard for a number of meetings and provided a lot of good input for us and we really appreciated that. And as you know, we had, it was comprised of property managers, realtors and at-large members of the community along with Kelly and Dick as council representatives. So it was a good, I think, diverse group and we made good progress with them. We weren't able to reach consensus on a lot of things. We were able to reach consensus on the map in the three zones. But how exactly those zones work, there was a difference of opinion and the ultimate discussion about a cap number is something that we couldn't reach consensus on. There were several camps on that definitely with the group. So we'll get into that a little bit more. I just wanted to recognize all the work that Sarah Crump and Brad LaRochele have done. They were doing all the background data research and everything. Brad's pulled together this whole GIS package here that we're going to be able to look at. If you have specific questions as we get into the maps, I mean, we can take a look at individual subdivisions or complexes and take a look at, yeah, there's this many units here and that meant this many have short-term rental license. So we've got a fair amount of data available if you guys have questions on that. My goal is not to get into the weeds on the memo. I know you all read it already. Some of you have lived it already. And so really, you know, there's a lot of questions at the end, but what it really boils down to, at least as a starting point, Rick and I were talking this morning, is really it's about getting your guys' input on the map. And then if we can get, you know, in a good position on that, then we can start discussing this cap number, which ties into most of the other questions that we've asked. So maybe if we could blow it up just a little bit, Brad.
Mark, what's the best map? The one that comes in, came in our packet or the one that Shannon?
The one that Shannon sent, a little more legible. Apologize for that. It was a little blurry, the one that was in the packet. And then this will hopefully be a little better, too, and we can.
Of there is proposed a zone three. It's all blue.
Correct. Yeah, so, so here's this. So here's this three, three zones that, um, the task force came up with. Zone one, calling it our tourism overlay, um, area, that's, um. Pretty much what we had discussed months ago as being kind of the bed base for the ski resort. Those areas that have historically been used, uh, to a large extent as short-term rentals. Zone two is something that the task force kind of came up with, because originally the discussion was. Let's identify this tourism area and then areas outside of that. Zone two is something that the task force came up with based on some input from the community. Um, and it really looked at, um, the downtown area. And another area that got some attention was Upper Warriors Mark. Generally speaking, the percent of units that are in the short-term rental pool in that area are more than. Areas outside in zone three, zone three has the least amount of, um, short-term rental right now. But, uh, zone two's a, a little more in terms of the intensity there and zone three as a highest level, or excuse me, zone one, the tourism overlay has a highest, it's about seventy-eight percent currently. So.
You get the percentage of, uh, two and three as well, do you know what those are?
Yeah, it's in that chart Jeffrey on page. Or of his memo, you see there that example.
Fifty-one and twenty, yeah, I'm kind of going back and forth between the map that Shannon sent me and the packet, so it's.
Yeah, it's fifty-one percent in zone two, seventy-eight percent in zone one and twenty-eight percent in zone three currently. Overall, the goal is to, I think the task force generally agreed on the overall goal of. Allowing some additional licensing in zone one. And zone two and three, we wouldn't be encouraging additional licensing. Zone two, we ended up and staff kind of refined this from the task force meetings a little bit to say. Zone two is basically what you see is what you get, it's, we're just trying to maintain the numbers there. Zone three, on the other hand, it's really a focus of decreasing that. Significantly would be Ken in terms of the amount of short-term rental license that are there right now, now how do you do that? And we're not taking anyone's license away, however, there's two, two different methods by which license can go away. At least the way things are dealt with today, and that's either that someone voluntarily decides. That I'm no longer putting my unit in a short-term rental pool. Or the second way is if the property sells, when the property sells. The license does not run with the property and so at that point, that, that license would go away. So the thought process kind of behind this is in the zones, especially in zone three. That where we have a lot of our existing residential full-time neighborhoods that those licenses. As someone decided or sold the property or decided not to renew it, it just goes away and the number reduces.
There is a third way they could lose it and that would be through enforcement action and a revocation, but that is a very long, arduous process. That I don't, we have never revoked a license.
Yeah. Thanks, Rick. Okay, um, and then I guess now talking a little bit more about zone one. When we looked at it, in, in the criteria, I did identifying the staff report, things that we looked at were. Is, um, has, has this area been, have high density of short-term licensing already? And is it part of the bed base for the ski resort? Conversely, we look at the issue of, is this an area that historically had long-term rentals in it? That provided for a workforce? If it is, our goal was not necessarily to include that, for example, in zone one, which would allow additional licensing. Because we know we've lost units in some of those complexes. Examples are, if you look at the map, you can see in the middle of all that green in zone three. And Brad's blowing it up right now, you've got Gold Camp and then you have Grandview below it. Yeah, PK Village and, um. Those, uh, you know, Gold Camp itself has close to fifty percent short-term rental license, but I could tell you, there's a lot of workforce housing units up there also. And a number have been converted over the years. So it was a concern of the task force, um, and staff that, that, that we kind of. Not include properties that were contributing to our, to our workforce housing, because we are, obviously it's a huge issue. And then the third criteria that we looked at was when we had residential neighborhoods. The impacts of those residential neighborhoods and that's essentially where you get looking at, um, zone three. Areas like the Highlands and that where there has been a. Relatively significant increase in the number of short-term rentals over the years that have had impacts on the, on the community, so. Anyway, those are some of the criteria that went into the decision-making, the one thing I would point out is that Shock Hill, we excluded. So it's up there Peerless Drive and that, the single-family neighborhoods in Shock Hill. From this, they have a really low percentage of short-term rentals right now, like twenty-three percent of the units are short-term rented in that entire subdivision. And so it's kind of getting to that residential character issue again. So, and we haven't heard much from the Shock Hill folks in terms of anyone saying one way or the other on that.
You have, just to chime in a little bit on the point, I think it's important to focus on. You have gotten, uh, feedback from the community relative to Blazing Saddles. And that is one of those things that there was very much targeted discussion about. Uh, the historical use of that property and while today. That property, I believe there's, I want to say twenty-eight units there and out of that twenty-eight. Eighteen of them might, so the majority today have STRs, but it wasn't that way ten years ago. Ten years ago, I believe there was, in two thousand and twelve, there was only eight STRs. So it was a much lower percentage and I think many of you that have been around understand how that property was used historically.
Yeah, Brad, um, just pulled that up in that area and, uh, I think it's about sixty-four percent of short-term rented right now. Maybe like twenty-four out of thirty-six units, something like that. We can take a look at that. Eighteen out of twenty-eight. Four percent. Had a list, actually Lori Best provided us a list of complexes and, um, areas, locations in town. That we knew were workforce housing or had been in the past. And where we had lost some units and there was a concern, so Gold Camp, Gold Camp two. Grandview, Edelweiss, Blazing Saddles. Tarmigan, Valdezair, um, looking for a couple others. There's more on this list, but a lot of them were just ended up in, they all ended up in zone three essentially. But if you see, um, if you take a look, for example, Blazing Saddles, you see a lot of green around it in terms of zone one. But it's similar to what happened up at Gold Camp and at Grandview, it's surrounded by green as well. Then if you look in zone two, you can see there are some areas like Tanhauser, right there, Brad's got it, the pointer on it. We identified Tanhauser and took that out of zone two for the same reasons. And up further, we have, I forget what this, um, yeah, Edelweiss is, is right down there. And, uh, right there, and then we have another one, what is it called, Snowflake, something like, not Snowflake. Snow Loft, thank you, Sarah, um, which is on, off a Ridge Street down there, partway down, Brad, right there, yeah. Then we did have a couple of properties, um, that we added to zone two. And that was Chaparral. And the property adjacent to it, which is ten mile suite. So, um. I guess at this point, I mean, the, the task force spent a fair amount of time talking about this and, but we did come to a consensus on this. We did also maybe just scrolling down to the south a little bit, Brad. That dividing line on the south, um, off of Columbine Road there, we took a look very carefully at kind of the. Development pattern there and then the percentage of short-term rental units. And it changed pretty significantly once you went from the green to blue there, but we modified that, um, it wasn't originally like that, we moved it actually a little further south. And then as I indicated, Upper Warriors Mark got included in zone two. And, uh, that does have a, have a higher percentage of short-term rentals than lower down and we heard. From a number of several people from Upper Warriors Mark about their concerns about having that recognized. So I guess at this point. We're open for questions.
Maybe to start, Mark, um, that was a great overview on the different zones and thanks all of staff for your work and the overlay district task force. Um, the tools we use largely to create the zones were our existing land use guidelines. With the properties that we carved out, um, I agree with the logic and history there. But I guess because we are carving out certain units within different zones. Um, and maybe this is a question from Kirsten, but I'm wondering if we're applying the same standard across the board, um, is that okay?
Go ahead.
So the tools we use were largely our existing land use guidelines, but in certain situation, we use historical data, we think a certain percentage were. Workforce housing, we want to preserve it as workforce housing, so within a land use area, we carved out certain buildings and I just wanted to hear.
It's a very good question, um, one of the things that I have looked at is some of the other communities that have done similar things around short-term rental regulations. And they do, um, have traditional zone districts and often will tie concentration to either residential zone or commercial zone. We don't have those traditional zone districts, but we have, um, a rationale that's reasonable, uh, based on the task force recommendation. But we cannot discuss further details, I will just mention that there has been some competent.
So I feel like it's important to get at this is like, if we are relying mostly on. Well, I shouldn't say mostly, if part of the, what we're relying on is the language in the zoning, but then we specifically notch out one, that's fine.
Well, um, I think you all are raising an issue that's important to think about because any decisions we make, we. Arbitrary, but the rationale here, as I understand it, is the preservation of long-term rental. Hooks on the map as you're describing it, but it is tied to a rationale that's not just based on the map.
Okay.
And I think the rationale is threefold, um, depending on which properties we're talking about which zones, it's. It's preserving long-term rentals, you know, that, that are, we're losing to short-term rentals. It is preserving our neighborhoods, um, zone three, you know, and trying to preserve the character of our neighborhoods and then it's. Just pure capacity, that's how the, the capacity discussion began is just, how many days are we comfortable? With our community, how many days are, is our community comfortable with the valley being over capacity? And the roads and, and all the things that come with that, so really the, you know, the, the. Rational for this, this whole process around short-term rentals is threefold in my mind.
That's really important information, I appreciate that, I also would say that it's, um, absolutely well-settled at this point that. Setting a limit on concentration of licenses, does that constitute taking or not making someone's property and we're not. Impering their investment back expectations and that's been tested, but, um, certainly I want to make sure that everything we're doing is, is rational and reasonably based.
And nobody heard you, I guess.
We could hear you, but no one else.
I'll, uh, repeat that again, I, the one thing that is very well-settled, um, and, and many communities have tested this is that. Limiting the concentration of licenses is, is well-settled by, and we have authority to do that. You know, we, we want to not be arbitrary and we need to have a reasonable basis for doing it, but, um, that, that is very clear that we can do that.
So zone one, seventy-eight percent, uh, are STRs and. He said, we're, we're okay increasing that number, so that, that mean it's kind of caught blanks, they'll be able, a, anyone that. Sells and buys will be able to get a S, a, a short-term license?
No, um. What the task force as a whole was comfortable doing. I mean, some of the task force members was, were saying, we should, can you just back the map up, um, Brad, thanks, we should just, um. You know, have at it in zone one, with zone one, you know, anyone that wants a license can get one, but others were like, no. We have issues with that, you know, it comes down to activity levels in town, that type of thing. And so what the task force as a whole agreed to was we could get from seventy-eight up to eighty percent. And that's about sixty-six more licenses than are there right now.
Okay, so. In zone two, um, you could, you, it's, it's, you have a license, you sell your property. The next guy, a gal can get a license, but then it, uh, then it, it go, it goes with, uh. It is not transferred to the third sale, the second sale, right?
No, transferred to any sale.
Okay, never transfer, it's not true.
In any zone.
Okay. No, no, not transferred, but could the next person apply and get a license?
No, there'd be, I mean, they could apply, but there'd probably be a list that we're maintaining, the people that want license and they'd have to get on a list like everyone else.
So I think, Mark, if you don't mind, I just wanted to clarify one thing about the, um, task force and sort of. You know, when we developed that task force, it was after we had voted on the cap. And it really wasn't a task force that was developed to consider the number of short-term rentals in any one location. What it was developed to consider was the overlay, the resort overlay that we were talking about at that time. And so that's why the makeup of the task force was what it was, it wasn't. You know, representative of our community, it was representative of people with specific knowledge. On different units and different areas in this community as far as. You know, um, if we had not come up with the concept that Abby and staff were really pivotal in helping us with this different zoning. But at the time, we were talking about which units would make sense to be a part of the bed base for the ski area. And that was really what the task force was developed for, and so although you really couldn't help but talk about the numbers and like. How would licensing work, that wasn't really the focus of the task force and I think that. You know, the realtors and property managers, um, were, you know, sort of, um, more liberal with the number of. Of licenses that they were comfortable with, well, I mean, they were all terrific community members and willing to, you know, talk about managing. They didn't, you know, suggest that it should be a free-for-all by any means, but they were on the more liberal side and then the several community members at large. Really were on the less liberal side and so. Although the map, um, I think everyone felt comfortable with that this was a great direction and. Was on board with it, committed to the zone and kind of the different areas. I don't think that there was consensus among the group on any numbers and I think that was also. Not really encouraged by Rick or staff, um, to really try to get to the numbers, because that was not what the task force was made up for.
Worthy of a discussion.
It was.
But we reminded them that that ultimately boils down to the council decision on where those numbers are gonna land.
And so I just don't want, I don't want to say that like the task force was all in favor of going from seventy-eight to eighty percent, because I don't really think we got there. I think there was a great discussion of, we'd love to build in, um, some. To make it easier to get a license in zone one and harder to get a license in zone three and how we get there is really. And how we get there is really not something that the task force super got into or was able to build consensus on.
And and that the majority of people believe, right? It should be, there should be many more in zone one and fewer in zone three. And if we're gonna, we add the one, we might have to take away from somewhere else.
Can we talk a little bit about zone one? I'm just curious with whatever we may decide within that area, of course, there's future developments. There's a lot of different issues within zone one that makes it the most complicated. Mark, when you look at zone one, if future possibility for future development that isn't in the pipeline or redevelopment where some density was left on the table, is there a significant amount still left in zone one?
There's not a significant amount left. It pretty much resides in two spots and one is East Peak Hotel. And which has at least the current plan has it it's there's about forty nine condo units. A lot of it's a hotel, which is a separate license, a lodging license, which we're not even really discussing here. The second property is the North Gondola Lots area. And based on a hundred and forty three single family equivalents, you know, it could be maybe up to three hundred units there that would need a license.
And outside of those existing projects, there's not much density.
There's not much left. It's it's pretty close to built out in the rest of that area. I mean, with one or two, maybe minor exceptions at that.
Can you show me the map real quick on blazing saddles and just refresh my memory on what zone that's in? And then also if we could take a look at Christie Heights after that, that'd be great. We got some
Sure.
feedback via email on those.
Yeah, so this is lazy saddles, right where Brad has a pointer. It's right there at the corner around about four o'clock and the northeast side.
So that's carved out as zone three in this current.
Correct.
And then run me through the numbers again on the ratios that you currently have for STR licenses, please.
I think it's actually sixty one.
Sixty one percent.
That might be.
Sixty four. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, so these numbers are actually from November. And there have been a handful of licenses that went away in this particular one. I think the actual number is seventeen.
Okay, thanks, Brad. And then could you go up to Christie Heights as well? I just would love, we got a couple of letters on that. I want to see what the the numbers are there relative to say like Shock Hill.
Fifty four percent.
Interesting. Okay.
Do you have a, are you done, Todd?
Yeah, I'm done for now.
Do you have a historical, I I know you said it, but I can't remember on blazing saddles, what it what it was before or how?
They have, they've added, in the last ten years, they've added ten STR licenses. So in twenty twelve, what Bella dug up in twenty twelve, there were eight.
Eight now is eighteen.
There were eight. So yeah, they've added ten licenses in the last.
Out of thirty one, how many?
Mark, you know, we we kind of, you emailed me some of the overlay with the land use district. If if we were to look at this map by land use district, because if when you drill down to each land use district, it has language in there that speaks to the intention of that area, whether it's low density, high density, meant for bed base to ski facilities or even a lodge hotel, how does this look? Instead of evaluating on the percentage of long term rentals there are, if we evaluated it and looked at it from a land use district solely and whether it's meant for high or low density, do we know what that looks like and does it look very similar?
Yeah, Brad can bring up the land use guidelines here and oh, it's not on here. Didn't just the lug destinations, ten, twenty, yeah, see right there. So, yeah, so if we blew it up, you'd you'd see even more in there in the overlay area. If you if you get closer, as you back up, they disappear kind of, but to a large part, they do mimic the areas that are intended that have this specific language in the land use guidelines that say intended for ski area bed base, that type of thing. This was, you know, Eric suggested this months ago that we take a look at that as a first crack at maybe how to define this area. Some of them don't, not every one of them says that. So it's not totally consistent, but they would say like higher density or something like that there. So to a large extent, we did this base this map on those those guidelines. But there was some tweaking there when we started looking at, you know, certain areas. Got down to like Main Street Station, Columbine Road, areas like that. But to a large extent, and I I don't know if we can overlay the is that the zone one that's in the, no, that's just the percentage. So I'm not sure we can overlay the zone on top of the lugs. Mostly the, it mimics where the boundaries of the land use districts are. You know, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, they're all included in zone one as is, you know, ten, twenty one, twenty. About that I talked about for Shock Hill and Gold Camp and Grandview.
Ten, ten in lugs is actually low density, permanent housing. It is not land use district ten does not reflect any ski in ski out. So the way that you modify that one was to actually add part of that into land into overload overlay zone one. When theoretically, if you want just by land use guidelines, that should really be in zone three.
Correct. And I think.
Language on in the in the lugs.
Correct. And I think the reason there's that distinction is because there was a higher percentage of licensing in that area. You know, for example, if you move up towards Shock Hill there, we included like Shock Hill cottages, the other, basically all that higher density duplexes, townhomes around the gondola itself.
Yeah, the the committee started with the logs and then we started bringing data. And it and it changed with data. So I think the premise was sound. How you interpret that is, you know, we may not all agree to that. And I think the committee didn't agree to it entirely. But I think generally they did.
To make sense. Okay, other question.
If if we follow the suggestions that the task force came up with as far as one, two and three, how many total licenses would we have tomorrow? Would it be thirty seven hundred?
There was no consensus on that.
Oh, okay.
That is something that we need to. I mean, if we can solve anything tonight, I think it would be that number and then how we felt about the map in general. I don't, I mean, I don't honestly know that. I I think there's a lot of considerations here. I don't know that we're going to be able to go right to legislation. I think we may need another. We may need another meeting as a council.
We're gonna need an exec session before we can probably get too far into the weeds on the mapping part of the zones. I think it's, I I think what we should, what we should try to get here is start to get a feel for generally how you feel about some of this stuff and where we may be on. Depending on what, you know, where zone one may end up, there's a couple of, you know, how are we, where are we leaning on the numbers? If we want to start just kind of having some discussion in that, but I think before we go, we're just not at a place where we're gonna, I think, say, are we ready to move forward with adopting the zones as they're laid out today?
Okay, fair enough.
Without some additional discussion.
We're gonna.
An exec session.
We can't do that tonight since.
We might, well, you you wouldn't want to, you want to.
Wasn't posted.
And posted.
But I do think the, I think like a really good question for the council is because at first we had the idea of kind of more of a two zone concept, which was the overlay or not. So I'm very interested to hear are people in favor of this three zone concept? Does that it's going, you know, meeting needs and meeting the priorities of the community? How people feel about that.
And then to your point, Jeffrey, though, on the top of page one thirty of your packet, there's a table there that does describe the STRs today.
Yeah, okay.
And so, you know, back a few months ago, we had forty four hundred. That's now at forty two hundred because some people didn't renew at the beginning of the year. But so when we get to that discussion about numbers, it all has to be reduced from that.
Yeah, okay. That was helpful. Thanks.
One more question, Mark, do you know the waitlist for per zone?
Yeah, we do. Bella just put that together. And there are fifty people on the waitlist. And is it twenty in zone one, Bella?
And so part of that question too, I think is, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the task force agreed that we should have three zones as mapped and that each of those zones would have their own waitlist. So it's a little complicated right now because we're over the cap and then so presumably it wouldn't be.
No, and the reality is it's going to take twenty years. If you ever get to it in zone three.
For zone three.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that was a good, a good point you brought up is they wanted still to see some allowance for licensing in the future in each of the zones, not just in zone one. So even those zone three of maybe twenty years out. And that happens at some point theoretically, there's a possibility. In zone two, it's kind of like soon as one goes away, there's one available.
Well, that's not exactly true in two, right? Because we're still well over.
Actually, the way we presented it here is we're only like five over, so we would just reduce it by five. We took a little liberty with that just because it seemed to make sense to provide a better distinction in how we're treating that zone. And so really it's more like what you see is what you get.
So that's the one sixty two, one fifty seven is the number of licenses currently. There's one sixty two, so.
Right.
It would be more immediate.
Would need be in effect creating hard caps in each of those zones with an overall cap of thirty seven hundred? And then a cap within the specific zone. So let's say in zone one that, you know, there's a ratio that is created of, say eighty percent, right? And say we're below that in that zone and then eventually our caps get down to we, you know, zone th- three, no new licenses, but would we then?
Yeah, the proposal is it kind of like the table on a couple of pages earlier. And yeah, this maybe we didn't reach a hundred percent consensus from the task force on this, but roughly the idea was you set a percentage that you and that essentially serves as a cap. So and for each one of those zones, so in zone one, like on the table, it says eighty percent. So that would allow some additional licensing and other sixty some units compared to what they have today. Zone two, it's fifty percent and you know, you have to lose a handful of license to get there and Zen Zen zone three, ten percent, a lot of license have to go away there. But in e- in each of those cases, that's a cap, an individual cap for the zone.
Okay, thanks.
And one thing we haven't heard from the council as a group yet is how they feel because that that's really, I mean, you're asking that, but that's your decision. This is going to be what you guys are going to ultimately decide is, I mean, it could, it could be from one end of that spectrum, it's unlimited in zone one, right? Because you're already at almost eighty percent, you're seventy eight percent. And as most of them will tell you, the reality, you're never going to hit a hundred percent STR. So, you know, why not just leave the door open and say if you're in zone one, it's unlimited? That's one. And the other one is you start ratcheting that number down and capping it. You know, do you want to be at that thirty seven hundred total, which is the twenty two plus fifteen? You know, or do you start, do you inch it up and allow a few more? And those are totally where, you know, we want to hear from you all on and that, you know, I I don't know that that necessarily plays into exactly where the lines draw or not. You know, it's going to be more of a philosophical question that you're going to have to answer no matter where the line is. As long as if we agree that we're going to stay with three, like Kelly raised earlier, do we like that concept of that downtown area while it's only three hundred and something units? There are enough people thought it was just different enough that it's a war in its own zone.
Yeah, I'm very supportive of the three zones and that general concept. I think that would work really well. To jump to another question in our packet, I am in favor of migration of some sort. I think there should be movement. Whatever cap we decide, we shouldn't wait twenty years to meet it to issue a new license. I think it's very important that we do have movement within zone one. And I very much agree the general agreement from the task force that there should be movement and there should be an allowance of more licensing there. I think what's complicating this larger discussion and maybe it's a conversation we need to have with Kirsten first is the big questions I see for us is how we're dealing with new development and what we're doing with exempt and non exempt. And I think that complicates the numbers.
Mark, when it comes to exempt and non exempt, like Carol's talking, do we know what percentage of the exempt properties currently have short terminal licenses? Is it, is it a hundred percent? Like does?
Sarah can tell you.
I think it is.
It's pretty.
I mean, there's fifteen or sixteen properties, I believe.
Eight properties.
On the exempt list.
Can I, can I ask to be censored? There is, so we didn't, we do have the exam. Then we have the BGV properties that are within that and and they are at a hundred percent. The the other properties that are not the reserve ownership type, they will be very in the higher ninety percentile, but they they're not necessarily at a hundred percent.
Like Beaver Run, I don't know that every unit in Beaver Run has an STR.
Oh, there's, there's, even the village, there's a very good mixture of second homes there, even some of them are all right. But it's very high ninety percent, which with the Breckridge vacation, United States are licensed at a hundred percent.
And so the BGV properties are included in those eight properties and Crystal Peak and one ski hill as well.
Hey, Mark, could you explain question four? I tried to call you today, asked you what it meant, but. I tried to call you today, ask you what it meant, but does the council support maintaining a separate exempt license for non-exempt license, yada, yada, yada?
Yeah, so, okay. So exempt that we were talking about right now, those are the properties. We've, we've had this dual categorization for quite a while now in our code. An exempt have twenty-four-hour front desk, phone, and twenty-four-hour security right there on site. So they have been always addressed differently. And just so you know, right now, I mean, so you guys put a, a cap in back in like September, the end of September, took effect in November. That applied to non-exempt properties. Exempt properties are still able to pull a license. I mean, most of them already have, so it's not a big deal. But, so there's always been a distinction between the two. One of the things that the task force talked about is, does there need to be this distinction? And should we treat them differently or not? And so that's why some of these numbers got blurred together. Because as you recall, the council set a cap of twenty-two hundred non-exempt, but then there's another fifteen hundred exempt license. So that gets you up to this thirty-seven hundred number or whatever, whatever other number the council wanna pursue.
And I think the other part of the reason to be considering whether we should maintain an exempt status is that we heard from a lot of people, a lot of, you know, HOAs and unit owners, that if there's an exempt status, they will tear out their manager's unit or tear out a unit and put in a front desk so that they have, so that they can get that exempt status. And so that was part of the catalyst in the discussion of like, is this actually gonna hurt the community and hurt people living long-term, you know, in those units? If, if we're really incentivizing getting an exemption by having a front desk?
Mark, in the memo, you talked about there may be issues with grouping exempt and non-exempt. Can you talk about some of those concerns?
Well, that's some of the things we just described.
Well, one of them, I think a definite one, what we posed a question on is when it comes to conferences. So conferences are a big part of Breckenridge. And you have a couple of conference facilities. You have one, you know, that has over ten thousand square feet and you have one that has over forty thousand square feet of con- actual conference meeting space. And in order, as you all know, in order to have a conference, you have to have lodging that's tied to that conference. So the ability now, those, and the, the lot, the, the conference-type facilities that we have in town are currently exempt. So if we take away that exempt status and they become competitive in this pool of available units and even in zone one, and you start losing that ability to maintain those STR licenses in those conference facilities, you start risking the ability to house a conference potentially. Now, how many are you gonna lose over time? I don't know, but, you know, any loss of those. Because almost any large conference we have fills up and they usually have, you know, booking things. They set up deals with these people for X number of rooms and often those rooms bleed over into other properties. So they take almost every, on a large conference, almost every room they have on site is taken up. And it's an awareness that we have that we, we, you know, we think conferences are important to the community. Any unintended consequences.
And remember, conferences are often, not always, but often during the week. They are also often, certainly not always during the off-season. I mean, our, our conference business, I think, is very important to, to our economy, in my opinion.
So why couldn't adjacent rooms just make up the difference for the room nights for Beaver Run?
You know, I think is, there's a significant investment in, in the business model of a large, say, over twenty thousand square foot convention center. Certainly, there's, there's profitability at a certain point, but there's also significant expense in having that size conference space because it sits empty, you know?
And what's Beaver Run have, like?
Forty.
You know, and.
So, I, I think that we, we need to support the business model as Rick described, where they have a bed base adjacent to it. So, I, I, I feel the conference business is, is important to, to the, to the, in, in having a successful conference business where it's kept up and, and the ability to have a sizable, it's, I think it's important to the brand of Breckenridge to be able to have those type guests. Those, those guests are, are destination guests typically, not always typically. And, and weekday guests, so I, I, I think it's important that we support that business model.
As far as conferences, Beaver Run's the only one that is in the mix.
Over twenty thousand square feet, yes. There are smaller ones.
The, the Village, you know, ten mile comp, ten-mile room, and Jason and that, they've got over ten thousand square feet there. It was interesting when I talked to Bob Barto just yesterday, he was indicating one of the issues is being able to control that inventory. Because when they get like a CML or these larger conferences that come in, they want to have a block of four hundred rooms or whatever it is available. And so they have to kind of be able to manage that in order to bring these large conferences in. Otherwise, though, you know, they, they need to be guaranteed, you know, to get this standard, this rate and all that.
I mean, that year is out, I mean, typically conferences are booked with a long lead time. Whereas the actual attendees don't book the rooms, put down deposits until far closer in. So the facilities have to have the ability to block the rooms and have them available and take the chance that the conference may cancel. And, you know, and they lose those, those higher rate rentals.
And I, and I just think ours is somewhat of a unique, I mean, you go to conferences in Denver at the West and that, those are all individually owned. It's not, I mean, they're a lodge, they're not, you know, it's all owned by one entity. It's not individually owned units like we have, which creates this different animal where I worry about some unintended consequences on, depending on how this unfold on conferences potentially. I think we have enough units in zone one that is probably not gonna be a huge issue, but something we need to have an awareness of and decide. If, because we could carve out an exception if we wanted to.
That would you'd, you'd recommend?
Yeah, I mean, I'm always a little hesitant when you start carving out exceptions to benefit one or even two people in that. But it, you know, it depends how important it is to the community. But, you know, it also depends on how, how, where, where we land on our final numbers in zone one, right? If we go to, if you say, well, we're gonna allow eighty percent and that only adds another sixty licenses, those sixty might get grabbed up quick, I don't know. If you say we're gonna go to eighty-five percent or we're gonna do ninety percent or something like that, where all of a sudden we've got an extra hundred and fifty, two hundred licenses in zone one, I wouldn't even worry about it. I mean, the reality of, of, you know, losing a significant number of STR licenses in, in a conference site is like next to zero. I think if we're gonna have that higher percentage in zone one, I, I, I wouldn't worry about it.
Well, it goes back to the fundamental question, are, are we gonna do it zone by zone with caps? You know, are we going to? Before we add new licenses, are we gonna say we have to get back to thirty-seven hundred? Or, you know, if we eliminate the exempt and non-exempt?
If you do, yeah, I wasn't thinking we were going.
So that's the fundamental question we probably need to discuss to, because that's fundamental to all these other questions.
Say that again.
How are we gonna handle the cap? You know, we passed an ordinance at twenty-two hundred, you know? Well, I guess the first question is, do we want to continue with the exempt and non-exempt status? For me personally, I do not. I, I heard enough, you know, the other piece of it is, is I think with technologies, there's not always an expectation of a twenty-four-hour front desk anymore. I think it's becoming a little bit more the norm. If you show up late, you, you booked your room online or there's, there's ways to check in through technology and not necessarily with a human being there. So I personally am in favor of, of eliminating those, those two categories, exempt and non-exempt. And then, which would in turn take our cap from twenty-two hundred to thirty-seven hundred. And those current exempt units would have to compete for licenses with the, the current non-exempt, you know? But that's where I think we should be personally.
Um, one other clarification or something to point out, and Sarah just mentioned to me, just to remind you guys, all the exempt licenses are in zone one currently. The other little bit of complication is how we treat timeshares. They get a license per unit essentially. Those licenses never really go away because you've got fifty-two different owners for each one of those units. And so it's not like those sell, those individual timeshares might sell for one week or whatever, but those licenses never go away like other licenses do. So I just wanted to point that out.
So the question with that one then becomes, if those licenses never go away, that's a number of units that don't really contribute to the, the degradation that we look for. And they're, they're, just by the nature of what they are, they're insulated from really being part of this discussion.
That's, and we have that number, I can't remember the number of BGV licenses out there, but yeah. Eric, what, what, when you say degradation.
So, so, here's one of, the reduction, that reduction. So if you currently have, just, just say we come to a, a place where we need to see a hundred, say you need to see a hundred, a reduction of a hundred in zone one before you issue any licenses, there are X amount that are never going to be part of that. Is that, you know, should that just be carved out on its own, not for the future, but for the current ones? You know, that future piece is something else to talk about. How, how we handle that in two or three years is that new development potentially comes online. That's something totally different that, I don't even, I, I think we're in the weeds enough right now that we handle this first, we can handle that.
Well, we, we don't know enough details.
Well, no, we don't even know how many. So, but.
That's the easiest question of all of them, we deal with that.
We deal with that later, but the, the, how many total timeshare licenses are there, Bella? Do you know?
One minute.
So one, go ahead, Carol. In one of the task force meetings, I believe, it might have been Bella brought it up, but this thought that, and we're well aware, we created this artificial boom with our discussions about the cap. And some thought that in zone one, like, maybe the free market would regulate itself based on people not feeling like they needed to hoard license. So I'm wondering, and you might not have this number readily available, but I'm wondering what percentage of zone one had a license in August? And I think that would reflect closer to what the free market ratio of these properties would be.
So along that same lines, I was thinking about, you know, if we do increase and go up to eighty percent and there's sixty-four licenses, we know they're just gonna get snatched up. I mean, that's the way I imagine it happening. So in one of the task force meetings, Steve Girard suggested, and I think there was a lot of interest in the comment. But even if we were going to try to get down to a number that with, for every two licenses that expired or were given up, one license would, would become available in zone one. And so you'd still be reducing, but it would create some movement in zone one, which, you know, makes sense for an area where the impacts are less, the congestion is less, the, it's meant for bed base. And so I, I really, I've been thinking about this a ton and I think I have landed on, but I do think that's a really good option is that no matter where, you know, if someone sold in the Highlands and someone sold in Town Core, that's zone two and three, and one new license would become available, you know, tomorrow, even if we're still at forty-two, sixty-six and we want to be down at thirty-seven hundred. So I think there is, and then the other thing that that does is that allows people to be on the waitlist and keep moving through, but not, you know, those thirty people who are on the waitlist just get licenses and the space we've created to help the market has just gone immediately.
And that works. The only downside is that it's gonna, if you really want to reach a cap number, it's gonna take longer to reach it that way because you're kind of making that license live again somewhere else.
Right.
Three thirty-nine. That's three hundred and thirty-nine units that will never lose a license because of the way that they're handled.
Kelly, I, I liked your idea there on the migration. I, I think the ratio might need to be higher, though, like, is it seven to one? Is it ten to one, five to one, something that gets us reducing licenses, adding some to zone one, but at a, at a slower rate so that we can really kind of see what's going on, quality of life and on that tourist-to-employee local ratio? I think two to one's a bit, bit too fast in my head. Are there any negatives to get, getting rid of the, the exempt status? Is there anything out there that, that I'm missing that, if we, if we got rid of that, I, I like it because then we just have a number, you know, it's thirty-seven hundred or whatever. Any negatives to getting rid of the exempt status?
Well, with Dick's talking about with the convention, that's, I mean.
So let me back up. If we carved out a convention status to make sure that we're looking after that segment, which I would be in support of because I think it's important to our community and our business community. If we set that aside, anything else that would be a negative of getting rid of the exempt status?
I always felt like, I mean, one of the reasons I supported exempt originally on it is because you have these units that, let's face it, they operate like hotels, not, you know, residential living areas. And so that, you know, that's why, you know, you have three properties for BGV, the total three hundred and thirty-nine licenses, and all of a sudden you're putting in a mix that will never change. They never have to worry about whether they lose because their owners can, they have fifty-two owners per unit that can, you know, forty-nine of those owners can change in a year and nothing changes. So you're, you know, they've got a little different model, it's just not apples to apples. And you've got, you know, these other things where we're treating these properties that basically operate like hotels. Some exceptions, but then the problem is, is once you create opportunities now, we're seeing people, we've had one property convert since we did this, there wasn't exempt, over two exempt.
Well, I think if we do keep the exempt status, we gotta put a, we gotta put a lever in place to make sure that you can't just.
Yeah, I think.
Because you want.
We'd have to grant, almost grandfather or do something different, maybe identify criteria to identify those properties, but.
And, and Rick, just piggybacking on your comments, and, and I don't disagree with you, but it, depending on how we handle zone one, it, it wouldn't really affect those properties if we end up upping the percentage of zone one.
I don't think so.
Historically, has the percentage of zone one changed over the last ten, twenty years? Like, was it at fifty percent in two thousand and ten? And has it gone up? Because we're, we're, what was being suggested is that if we up the percentage to eighty-five percent or ninety percent, that we'll never get there, so there will always be licenses and it'll create some viscosity in, in that market. But I, I'd love to know if we were at fifty percent ten years ago and there, and with the expectation that we'd never get up to seventy-five percent and then we're here in ten percent, you know, ten years later. By setting a cap at eighty, eighty-five, ninety, whatever it is, are we gonna just reach that and be at the same place?
I'm not.
So, yeah, we don't have.
And we don't need right now, just.
Yeah, I can, I mean, generally it it's always been higher than the rest of the town, you know, it's always been a higher percentage, obviously. But I would, I would guess it's gone up like everywhere else, partly because of all the. You know, online sites you have now like Verbo and Airbnb in the last, you know, eight years.
Thank you.
You know, I think the one piece we all need to keep in mind as well, there's also. These other properties out there that don't, that are not subject to the ordinance, the short-term rental ordinance, and they are. Like, um, the Marriott, say, where where all of the units are owned by the same ownership group. So, um, and and the the logic is, is that they are acting like hotels. They they essentially are hotels, so. So there is that group out there as well, just so we all keep, gotta keep that in mind as well.
Yeah, those are, um, to Dick's point, the Double Tree, the Breckin. Uh, Skiway Lodge, Residence Inn. The Fireside Inn. The Bivvy Gravity House and the Welk Resorts or now it's Marriott, the Ranahan there. Total number of units, you know, it's probably around four or five hundred.
What's the conversion rate when during new builds to for hotel compared to condo tell? Square footage per SFP.
Well, we got rid of the, oh.
What what did it used to be?
It used to be twelve hundred and thirteen eighty, I believe.
Was it thirteen eighty for hotel?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. I'm just trying to, because the hotel never got that mass bonus that.
Oh, it didn't.
Okay, so, um.
Eric, could we? I don't think we're gonna get too much farther along without some additional.
Information.
Discussion, but I'd be curious to hear a little bit from how maybe. How we're feeling about how, you know, what. If, you know, this whole total, if we're gonna be closer to thirty-seven hundred at, you know. At the end, or we're gonna up that a little to allow a little more in zone one.
Why don't we, why don't we just do comments now? Just sort of based on where our discussion was, you can either, you can either use the the questions that Mark asked, although some of them probably aren't. You know, the, this is really just general stuff that we're doing to let the staff go back and start to.
And what else would they might want to know that we can.
What else do you want to know? What else for the next discussion? So.
Follow up on Jay's question of what did the zone one look like ten years ago, maybe?
And even just right before our ordinance.
Yeah, we know we added the almost five hundred units, right? When we first started dealing with this over that six-month period and.
We we added five hundred sixty-seven units between September and November, but. Um, they were in mixed areas. It wasn't all in zone one. It was kind of evenly distributed between the three zones. And I want to correct something I said earlier. There were only eight exempt properties, but that was the lodge list. There are fourteen exempt properties.
Who wants to start? Old guy or new guy?
I'll jump in.
Hazing.
Um, I like the three, uh, three zones we've got up there. I think that's a great layout, you know, I think. Most folks would agree that zone one is where we want the rentals. Um, I like the zone two. I would personally maybe look at shifting Christie Heights into zone two. Blazing Saddles into zone two, so one downgrade, one upgrade, and then also maybe ten houser on main from zone three into zone two. But conceptually, I think, well thought out and a good, good start. I also am a fan of getting rid of the exempt because it just makes the counting easier. For one point, um. And I like the idea of separate designation for convention and conference centers. Think that's valuable, um. And I think at the moment, I'll also like. Um, a migration from zone three to zone one with a high ratio in there, just to make sure we're ratcheting down those license numbers. And the other pieces of this are.
Total cap number.
Think right now I'm good at at the existing ordinance at thirty-seven hundred. We can allow for some migration, um, and then I think we adjust as we see how quality of life. Tourist ratio employees looks because I'm worried that we go backwards on. On long-term housing, quality of life, you know, the 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 short-term rental numbers are so strong that. I think we're good with the five hundred extra bonus licenses we got. There's enough beds to rent.
Dick?
My feelings shifted a little with the election, honestly. Um, I felt like. The the citizens of Breckenridge in the election and the resounding nature of the three that were elected. With double the votes of the six that weren't elected. Says that the 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 community wants what we're doing and supports what we're doing, so. For the whole number, I'm good with the thirty-seven hundred. Um, I think that's where we should be. Some kind of migration, two to one, three to one, I, you know, I'm intrigued by that. I'm probably open to that. I frankly look at, um. You know, when I hear that we've got twenty-six people in zone three on a waiting list. That troubles me. It brings some ambiguity to. A lot of properties that I I don't think should necessarily be ambiguous, so. I I'll throw out that I I would be very comfortable. Saying zero in zone three and moving all of those licenses. If you look at. You know, the scenario of the thirty-seven hundred, that would be three hundred and thirty-six licenses. And and put them into zone one right off the bat and, um. And just say zone three, there's no longer any ambiguity in our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods are our neighborhoods and we're gonna maintain our neighborhoods as our neighborhoods. And, um, we will not, you know, there's grandfathered licenses in there now, but, um. As we get natural attrition, we won't be adding licenses there, um. I spoke before and said I would like to see us eliminate the exempt, non-exempt. I do think we should work with our convention center, our large convention. Center, um, I think over twenty thousand square feet or fifteen thousand square feet, but a significant investment in in that. Because I do think they invest in our town, so. You know, if the rest of the group is good with my move three to one, that probably takes care of that right there. But if we don't end up doing something like that, then I, some other mechanism to to ensure. That 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 investment in our convention center is is, um, recognized, um. Yeah, and I'm probably a three-zone person. I I'm okay with the zones. I. I feel like, yes, whereas we started with the logs in the process, being part of the process in the committee. I feel like we supported our decisions with data and I'm okay with where we are.
Kelly?
Um, well, first I just want to thank the committee members because that was just a very high-functioning committee. And there were a lot of people who were on different sides of the fence with issues and. I felt like everybody came to the table to really, you know, try to make this the best ordinance and some of the best decisions that we could make and of course staff too. They had a lot of data and short turnaround, so thank you very much for that.
And I echo that.
I I think we still, or I know we still have a lot of work to do as far as we are facing a real employee shortage. We know that short-term rentals require additional employees. We know that, you know, the demands on town. To facilitate those people having a good experience here. Is significant and we have not gotten into that. We haven't even touched the carrying capacity and congestion and quality of life of town. And this is just one step. And unfortunately, there are so many other steps that are both going on concurrently with all the employee housing that we're currently building. And, um, you know, with different studies that we're doing for parking in different areas of the town. And transit and expanding our transit. I mean, there's just so much we need to do to get the balance of the town. Um, into a state where people who come here have a great experience and aren't waiting in lines. Around the, you know, to Blue River Bistro for the, um, for the gondola and aren't waiting three hours for dinner. And aren't waiting in lines at Bell Resorts. I mean, we really have a whole. Schwack of issues that we need to be addressing and the the cap was made to be one of many, many steps. And we haven't, you know, to change that cap at this point, when we haven't addressed any of those other issues. Seems just like short-sighted of us. So I would, I definitely believe in the, um. Three-zone concept and I think, you know, um, Dick's absolutely right that there are. We want to protect our neighborhoods, um, and zone one certainly should have the bulk of the licenses that are available. I am in favor of some, I I have heard the real estate community, you know, ask for. Some sort of liquidity in this and so I, in the short-term rental licenses and so I do. Believe in creating that and I don't, um, know what the right number is and I'm happy to discuss more whether it's, you know, a three to one, seven to one, whatever. Um, but I would really like to see there be some availability of licenses and not. As your, not a hard zero for five years. So I think, um, that would be a good thing to consider. As far, oh, you know, I I'm super struggling with the exempt, non-exempt. I really want the exempt exemption to go away. But I don't know if we have the exact right solution yet, so if there are other opportunities. If anyone has any other ideas, please email us. But also staff, you know, I'd love to work with you guys if you have some other thoughts and. Maybe it should just go away and do the conference exemption. I'm just not a hundred percent sure on that one yet. Future development is for the future. Anything I'm missing? Looks okay.
Jay?
Yeah, I want to, uh, applaud the work of the task force as well. I think the time and effort and thoughtfulness that went into preparing all this. Really can't be understated and I think that especially now in this time, community involvement. Of the utmost importance, like we do need to come together and have the voices be heard. And I want to thank staff, Mark, Sarah, you guys have really done an amazing job. I'm just, I'm still amazed by what you can click and get, whatever you're doing up there is fantastic, so, um. I, um, I I think that it is on the right track with the different zones. I have questions, um. At first, when I was reading through the packet, when before the new map was emailed out. I was under the impression that zone two extended basically from Main Street East to like High, High Street or up there. Seeing that it stops at Ridge, I I would love just some additional clarification offline or wherever. On what makes that, uh, zone two versus a zone one. In the core town, it seems to me that the DMP goal, goal three of having more boots and bikes. And less cars is really exacerbated in town, like that's, that's where we want them, where if. You know, encourages them to take shot, uh, guests take shuttles, encourages them to drive up, park their car and not touch it again until they leave. So just, I'm sure there's good reasons, but I'd be curious about that. I am in, the migration idea is intriguing and, um. I think it could provide the opportunity to shift licenses from areas that historically are intended for short-term rentals. Which have the infrastructure, that have sidewalks, that have transit. That are, you know, walkable to town or or onto the slopes. Um, I think that. Perhaps doing a two-for-one, um, going from zone, zone three to zone one makes a lot of sense. Because we we have a goal and we don't need to reach it overnight. It's not something that we have to hit that thirty-seven hundred in X number of years. If it's a point on the horizon, I'm very comfortable with that. And and it does, as Kelly said, it creates that viscosity in that zone one and keeps things moving. Based on the previous meetings and the heavy lifting that the council prior to my arrival had done. I am, uh, unbiased to maintaining the cap as it's currently configured. You know, listen, like, seven years ago, we were trying to figure out how to get heads and beds and how to keep people in the core of town. And the the pendulum has swung. Now we're going, hey, how do we get people out of the core town? And, um, there's too many heads and beds. And so I I I think that it is. With the pendulum swing where it is, it is imperative that we are flexible. And that we have the ability to maneuver with the changing environment around us. And if that means that this gets, you know, brought up once a year. That's okay, you know, the things around us are changing and I think we need to be able to be flexible with that. If the number, you know, looking at zone one. If the numbers were to go up to a hundred percent, that'd be eight hundred more units, right? That's with a half of a employee needed per unit. That's four hundred more employees that we need today. To to service that. And I just don't think that that is in our capacity right now. That might change. It might change in ten years, it might change next year. I I don't know. I don't think any of us knows, but flexibility is key and to revisit the number is. Is good and although that it may take longer to hit that 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 target number. I don't think we're after immediate gratification. I think we're looking for a slow roll to where we want to be. When it comes to exempt and non-exempt. There's so many questions that in my mind still need to be answered and there's so much with fair and versus unfair and front desk versus. For eight hours a day versus twelve hours a day before twenty-four hours a day, like, I just think that. I I I'm not ready to share a strong opinion on that right now just because I don't think we're there yet. Um, I do believe that there is. That conference and meeting space have and possess an amenity to this town that is extremely valuable. There's such an investment that it does. It does deserve to be treated differently. The 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 asset that those conference spaces have for our town, you know. It it actually, you look at the DMP again, you know, destination management plan is our point on the horizon, I I feel like. And I think to deliver a balanced year-year-round economy. That that meeting space fulfills that. Future development, I don't think that this is the time to address that at the moment. I appreciate the question. But and then, you know, above and beyond that, I I just think we really, I would love to look at enforcement. And and say, you know, and say, you know. I, but those numbers that are in our packet about the number of complaints. It it's, it's hard to really believe that when the number that has been put out there, the phone number that was put out there that a lot of us have on our phone. It just goes to a, you you're put on a a holding call that goes forever. And so we we changed the number a year and a half ago. Yeah, it hasn't really been put out there and so. Can we really, is there a way to get a grasp on what's happening out there and what's causing the uproar and what's causing the, uh? The fabric and the authentic nature being, uh, eroded and I think by actually allowing. Are the people that work here and live here to be able to talk to someone and and issue their complaint, whether it's online or on the phone would be. A huge improvement and and just the fact that. A huge improvement. And, and just the fact that. Short term rentals is not the boogeyman here. There's so many, the, the day traffic, you look at the numbers for the day traffic and they're. They're astounding. And I think that we need to also look at other options of how to encourage our guests. To leave their car in and take transit in.
Um, going down the line, first of all, the three zone approach, I completely support that approach. I think that largely makes sense. Um, kind of pushing short term rentals to where they're more suitable on town. I'm a hundred percent on board. With the three zone approach on migration, um, yes, I am very supportive of exploring migration. I think there needs to be movement. Especially in zone one, which is our bed base. It's historically been our bed base. It advances DMP goals, walkability, all those things. I think. Um, it's important that we keep that, um. Anything we do here today, uh, the fact that licenses are renewed once a year in January. It's going to be a slow feedback cycle and. My big point with all of this, I think this step, we got a little closer on this step, but I think it significantly. Improves the direction that we're going, but we're going to have to be, continue to be nimble even after this step and continue to reevaluate. Um, for the cap, um, again, I think that's something that falls. When you're being nimble, it seems like no matter what the number we pick, it's going to take years to get to that number. Um, I am a little bit open to discussing some flexibility in zone one, but largely. Keeping close to that original cap and the deciding factor in that is what we do with exempt, non-exempt and how we deal with future development. And I think before I have strong opinions on that, um, I just need to hear from Kirsten what our tools and options are. Um, and again, thank you to staff. Thanks to the task force members.
Yeah, like everybody else, I want to thank the task force and, and the staff and. Um, we mentioned any name except Bella and thank you for a lot of work in that. Um, I do think, uh, the hotline, we need to, if, we need to throw money at that, you, you know, I think. To make that more responsive, but I've had good luck with it in the past. So thanks for, thanks for the effort and it's, it's a tough job. I like the three zones, um, into the migration, um. Two to three, two or three to one, I don't know. Um, I would like, I would love to just have it, you know, one, one. Pocket as far as exempt and non-exempt. Um, but I definitely want to protect the convention business, especially over twenty thousand, uh, square feet. Um, I, I need to know more about that. I, I, in my heart of hearts, I'd like to say. Yeah, let's, uh, have it one in one bucket, but I think there might be some benefit. To the, to separating the two and I'd like to talk about that, learn more about that. Um, I'm into the thirty seven hundred. Um, and there again, this is like I said, this is like, this is like, you know, turning a barge. Uh, ocean liner. It's gonna, it's, it's, nothing's gonna happen quickly. Um, and like Jay was saying, we need to be nimble. If, if the market shifts or something. That, uh, is, is true now is not true in a year from now, then, uh, you know, I think we can, we can act accordingly. Um, but, uh, uh, yeah, so that's, that's about it. Um, I, I want to keep working on this. From the staff and there's a lot of this I don't, I don't understand. I'll be honest. Um, but I do think I, what, what Dick said about, uh. Uh, the, the election, I think that validates much of what we've been trying to do and, uh, will continue to do. And, um. So, uh, yeah, that's about it for me.
How many of the, of the ones that we've classified exempt as of today? How, what's the percentage? In those eight units, do we know? Well, we have, what was it?
Fourteen units.
There's fourteen out of all those units that are, that don't have an STR out of those eight. Fourteen exempt properties. Out of those fourteen exempt properties. What percentage of the room count has STRs?
Ninety-four percent have STRs. And so that's fifteen hundred and nine.
So let me start with the exempt, non-exempt. I don't like the way we, we, I think we need to change the classification. That is obviously a different animal though. Like more so than that, I would like to see how. Taking those units out of this mix affects these zones. What does that drive the? STR percentage in zone one down to? Because it has to drive it down a couple percentage. So there needs to be, I like the three zone concept. I think there needs to be a fourth zone. I think there needs to be a. Call it whatever you will, hotel zone that is ninety-five percent. Because those, I think those, in, in particular, the timeshare ones are skewing all the other numbers. That three hundred thirty-nine units in timeshare are really sort of affecting some of the numbers because we know they'll never change. So there, I think falsely affecting where we go. So somehow we need to treat. Those fourteen. Areas differently, but not something so easy that anybody can, can become one.
But that's kind of, don't you think the timeshare or the. Fractional ownership is different than the other? Ones?
No, because a lot of them operate like hotels. They have a, they, the, the reason we went with that thing with the front desk and the phone and the security was because they operated like hotels. It was a completely. I mean, that, I know that's a throwback to, to how we thought about things four or five years ago, when we created that for a completely different purpose. But I'd like to see how that affects the numbers if we can sort of tease some of that out and, and maybe. Change some of that and then we don't have to come up with a. Look, I like the conference thing. Setting the conference number of twenty thousand affects one property. I agree with you. I don't like the way it looks. Okay, that's number one. Number two. When you just talk about the cap, the cap's twenty-two hundred. I know we constantly talk about that exempt thing. That twenty-two hundred cap for me is a hard line. I think that we need to stay at that twenty-two. And then there's some, there's some differences with that fifteen hundred exempt. That we build back into that number as we go along and, and figure this stuff out. Um, for the next map, can you, Brad, can you do an overlay like you did? With the tourism and the land use districts, but with the lines of the land use districts. And then one other step, if you can take those. Land use districts that we originally called out as having language. That mentioned proximity to skiing, blah, 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 and put those numbers in like red. So we can really see how those zones look on top of the tourism map. I mean, that was great what you did. It didn't give enough information to know. And we had a, we had a list of those numbers if you recall, Mark. Um, okay. Um, so I, I do support the map. I, I support where the cat, where the, um, committee went. I think it's great. Yeah, I'll, I'll support some migration if it looks like it's the right thing, but the twenty-two hundred number is. I mean, can't screw with the twenty-two hundred number. That, that's something that I think we. We got there for a reason. I think we heard about it for a reason. Um, cap on future licensing. Well, honestly, this is a cap on future licensing. I mean, we're, we have a cap. Um, it's, it's really more about figuring out what works best for the community with our capacity issues with our. Um. Livability issues with our neighborhood issues. And I think we're, I think we're on the track, but if everybody will recall. We're doing this because there was some real. I think, I think a lot of people asked us to treat some of these areas differently. We could really just not do anything and leave the cap at twenty-two hundred and be done with this. And we would get. Close to the same result, but. I, I think this is, I think this is the right place to go as a next step. Um. Future developments, I think we, we just pushed that off. Um. Yeah, I, I think there's still some more information we need about these numbers and what's going well, where. Um, it's really, that's where my brain's getting hung up right now. And, and for some reason, those exempt properties. I think it really, really, um. Are really confusing some stuff. Um. That, those properties in particular get to some things that. Jay was talking about, about walkability. But one thing they really get to is a lot of those properties run a shuttle. And they run very successful, um, shuttles that they were, um, at the time. Through, through the planning process, we made them do those shuttles. I'll guarantee you not one of those properties would get rid of their shuttle at this point. They're very successful for their business model now. There, there's something in there, I think, with that, that shuttle usage. That creates a better experience for everybody in the community because you're getting people out of cars. That affects a lot of what we do. When we hear about capacity, we hear about parking, we hear about transportation, putting people in shuttles or having them where they can walk. Are two things that we strive for. So those are just some other thoughts. I do agree with pretty much everything that, that the council has said. Going forward, thank you to the four of you and everybody else that's helped in the work. Um, I know it's been, I know it's been difficult. I know it's been difficult for Helen and her staff with the licenses. I appreciate everything that everybody's done. So, thank you.
So what I would, uh, just, you know, every, a lot of curiosity on this, a lot of attention being paid to it. I see us coming back to the council. And probably. Um, smaller pieces for a while because the next agenda is filling up quickly with a lot of things, but we'll try to get back to them and carve out at least. Uh, thirty to forty-five minutes to. Go over a few more subjects, but this is not something that I see us probably resolving. Uh. In the next, you know, forty-five days. I, I mean, we're gonna, it's gonna take two, it's gonna take one to two, more additional meetings, I think.
Get our questions asked.
Before we're gonna get to where we're ready to start drafting legislation. On this, so.
Yep, yeah, good enough. All right. Anybody need five? Good. All right, let's punch through. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, last thing we have, we only have one more thing. Uh, town council committee assignments. So here's what we got at the moment. And I sent this out today. Didn't hear anything back, so. For Bosec, Jeffrey. For BTO, Dick. Breck History, Carol. For BCA, Todd. For Events, Kelly. For Childcare, Jay. Workforce Housing, Dick and Todd. Uh, Social Equity, Carol. Pro Tem, Kelly. Grants, Jeffrey and Kelly. And then water, even though we don't really list it that much, I'd like Dick to. Join me. I, I sit on water, but I'd like Dick to join me on water. Um, so those are the, the main ones that we do all the time. This is the time to say, I don't want to do that. This is the time for you to say, I don't like Bosec.
No, you know, I, I could not break Bosec's hat.
Yeah, no.
They're very excited. Scott Reed, look at him.
You know what? It's funny. This is the first day of the rec center. They came over and talked to me, but he didn't seem like he wanted to talk to me. I think it's because of Bosec.
You know, no, he looks like a kid on Christmas.
Are we good? We good with all these?
Yep.
Okay, now, there are a couple of other things that are sort of out there that. We, we don't, Kelly's been going to red, white and blue. I don't know if somebody else wants to do that or you want to.
I've been splitting it.
Want to keep doing that? I, you can report whenever.
Yeah.
Um. Their board work though. Did they create a sheet for, hey, Breck?
We give like, I mean, I think they really appreciate the conversation at the beginning. We give an update on what's going on that's pertinent.
Are you a voting member?
No.
Oh, okay.
They do whatever they want, special district. Okay, and then there's transit and.
Does that exist right now?
That's true. Yeah, transit exists, doesn't it? I mean, you need.
We're rebuilding in mobility.
Council person on transit?
He wants to say no.
I think that was a hard no.
Should I have somebody ride and herd on that?
Here's, here's how we look. We have certain committee task forces that are advisory to a department. Like police and rec. That have, uh, you know, they may have a council representative on it, but they're advisory to a department versus advisory to you.
To the council, right.
So, uh, whether, I don't think that you, if you have a council person that has an interest and wants to be a part of that, I don't know that it's. It's a form, like Dick doesn't, you know, report out on the police advisory committee on a regular basis. I mean, you get notes. That kind of stuff, but it, it, that's how we distinguish the difference in, in those types of things, so.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Right now, we're not looking at, we're looking at this mobility. Committee as being advisory to the mobility department.
Okay.
And we always welcome participation if somebody has. And maybe, you know, it's hit and miss, right? I don't know what's going on. Cause Eric, Eric, uh, rarely has an opinion about transit. So sometimes he'll show up.
I go, I just go right to the guy now. There didn't used to be a guy I had to bother Phelps. This is way better.
He agrees.
Okay, we're good with this?
Yep.
All right.
Uh, tonight under new business is when I think. Because the charter requires a vote for the mayor pro tem.
Yep.
We could do that under new business just to, uh, a motion.
If anyone votes no.
Oh, we'll know exactly. It's gonna be a voice vote too. So we know who, who votes now.
And I, if, if, you know, take a couple of minutes, I could, I have a couple items to go over before we break for dinner.
Let's do it.
So, there's a lot of updates coming up. And. And Peyton was listening and if I don't go over these things, she's gonna yell it. There, so, uh, we remind you council that tomorrow we're doing the celebration reception for. Aaron and Dennis.
We have cards here.
That'll be at Fatty's at four thirty. Right, so hopefully you're gonna be there for that. Um, there's the team Breck Spring Fling that's being held Sunday, May first at the Blue River Bistro from five PM to nine PM. Not sure exactly what that is, but it's, I know Todd's attending and Jay's hosting it. Uh. Northwest Cog is doing a regional economic summit and I believe Silverthorn, Dick is registered to go. That's on May fifth. If anybody, I know these were sent out to you, but if anybody has any interest, please reach out to Peyton and she'll get you registered. Uh, I hope that you have replied for grilling and town cleanup. At the Riverwalk Center. Right now we have Eric, Todd and Jay that have signed up. So we still need people that can fill in on the noon and one PM shifts.
Broke.
No, I'm, I'm at a rugby tournament in Ohio.
You can do. Kelly?
Yep.
I'll, I'll be around, but I, if, if I work with Kelly, I'd like to have a clear definition of who's in charge.
We'll see how it happens.
Really need to ask that, Jeffrey?
If you're, if you want tickets to the FERC fashion show on June tenth, make sure you let Peyton know. Um, also we have Todd and Carol registered right now for the CML conference. Uh, Eric will always do the opening. So, welcome to the full conference on that.
Register me too. There, there's a couple of other things I like to go to.
Uh, so we need, if you want to attend this email conference on June twenty-first through twenty-fourth, make sure you let us know ASAP. On that. And we are gonna buy a table for ten for the town for the Breck Great Air Stage Swing, which will be at the golf course.
Really fun.
Twenty-second.
That was fun.
So, last year was at the.
It was fun.
Cowboy, mine.
Do we know who the band is?
Yeah, that person. Anyways, we have a table at ten, so we'll be, uh, that's always first to counsel and your significant other if you. Want to be part of that table and then we'll open it up.
What's that date, Rick?
Friday, July twenty-second. Let us know soon if you want to go to that. And also we're, we're, we bought a table again for the COO Ski Area Breakfast, which we do every year. I don't know why I started that so early. That's not till October, but anyways. We'll, we'll let you know. Dick's like, I'll go to that. I'm working on it right now, October fourteenth.
I like listening to those guys talk. That's good.
Um, we are going to, I'll work with, uh, Kirsten. And we're gonna get some, we'll do a little doodle poll or something. We wanna. Schedule sooner than later a special meeting to come in and just do some governance training with the group. And I think Kirsten preferred to have that be kind of a special meeting, not try to build it into our work sessions.
On a Saturday.
Governance. This is all the stuff we've been doing wrong.
It's kind of the stuff that you heard at Bosec.
Oh, oh, are you, yeah, can we do like role playing?
You need to hear it twice.
Yeah, yeah. All right, cool. This is all the stuff we've been getting wrong, and there's a new sheriff in there.
Let's look at it as more rules, buddy.
Hey, I missed Tim. Tim had just given up, is really.
It was a short time. Um, that's all I have there.
That it? All right. Well, we are. Turn it till seven.
It'll be good. But we won't be back till the Monday afternoon.
Which is a bummer. Thor. Like to call it order, the Town Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, April twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two. It is seven PM roll call, please.
Owens.
Here.
Mr. Carlton.
Here.
Ron.
Here.
Ms. Sade.
Here.
Mr. Beckerman.
Here.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes, we have approval of the minutes for April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Do we have any? Questions, corrections, additions, deletions? Minutes stand as presented agenda, Rick.
I'd like to add, under new business, other, uh, item number two, mayor pro tem appointment.
We have some time allotted for discussion. Just trying to wait and see back. Alrighty, uh, citizens, uh, comments. Anyone in the public wish to comment on a non-agenda item, um, three minutes in length? Anyone, anyone? Public hearing is closed. We have, uh, an update from the Breckenridge Tourism Office. Lucy.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome new council members and prior council members. Um, I'll be really quick today. Um, we're kind of in a in-between period on reporting, so, uh, winter's not closed yet. I'm gonna wait till next month to do that. Summer's looking okay. Um, we don't expect the growth that we had last summer, but we should have a solid summer season. When you look at the pent-up demand for travel, temper that with the high prices for gas, lodging, airfare. You know, they're gonna balance out a little bit, so we're, we're confident that we're gonna be okay, not over the top, but okay. Um, summer events, we are, um, applications just open for the July fourth parade, so we're planning on that. We do have a high school marching band lined up for this year, which I'm really excited about. We will keep that parade tight like it was last year, so it'll be, you know, within an hour. Um, and then Oktoberfest, we've had a lot of issues, um, trying to figure this out. We've got most of the logistics resolved. We still have the big juggernaut to crack with a beer partner. I'm not sure that we'll get there, uh, but we're still proceeding as if the event's gonna happen. And what I would ask of all of you is if you have strong feelings about that event, one way or another, like you want us to make it work, even if it feels a little squishy. I need to know that, um, so let me know if you feel strongly, uh, one way or another. Destination management, we've been talking about this for, you know, a couple of years now. Uh, this summer, we're kicking it into high gear, and tomorrow, uh, morning at eight-thirty, we have a virtual, uh, community update. It's our summer preview, and we're gonna be talking a lot about what we're doing with pre-arrival messaging with the lodging community to get our guests. Kind of teed up for what to expect when they come, so. A lot of that's gonna be the construction, you know, everything that's happening, and a whole lot of it is the responsible tourism messaging that we've been talking about. So we'll go into that deeper tomorrow. What I will say, too, on the construction and, uh, traffic, we've started a work group with the I seventy, um, Coalition. And some members from the, uh, Colorado Tourism Office, Margaret Bose and I are kind of spearheading the group. But we're bringing a lot of people along the I seventy corridor together, kind of planning in advance for when Glenwood is gonna close, because it's gonna close. And all those people are gonna come around Highway nine, and they're gonna hit construction at exit two oh five or the other way. And, you know, it, everything impacts everything else, so we want to make sure that all the PIOs that could be impacted, that we're all pulling information from the same current source. And then we can tweak it for the way it needs to be read in our own communities, but we, we think a big, um, group conversation around that. In a regular, ongoing work group is important for the summer, because I think the impacts are gonna be regular and they're gonna be big, so. And that ties in with what we're doing locally with our local construction stuff, too, but I think it's gonna be, um, we, we wanna temper the, um. Temper the expectations as much as we can on that. So, um, and then Jeffrey, to one of your, um, earlier points, uh, impacts to livability, um, with tourism and, and the livability of communities. I think I've talked about this in here before, but we have been accepted and we have joined a group called Democracy, and it's DMO. Chrissy, and it is, um, an international group, and it's a global research study on best practices. On how we really, um, marry tourism with livability in communities. I mean, we know we have an unwritten contract with our residents to invite tourists into our home. And we want to make sure that all balances, and so now we have the benefit. There's twenty-two North American destinations that have been invited in, and thirty-six international ones that have been working on this. So our first meetings are gonna be like with Barcelona and Venice to see what have they learned? Well, how are they putting themselves back together after the pandemic? Because some of these places were the canaries down the coal mine with how much is too much, and they were ruined. And then there was nothing, so now they can build back in a more appropriate way. And so we'll have the benefit of learning from that. Most of them are large metro areas. Um, in North America, there are three, um, small destinations where one and Park City and Mammoth are the other two. Everyone else is a big metro. So we're really quite honored to be part of this, and I'll probably be giving you guys updates on this as we go. It's a program that will just run for a couple of months, and then we should, you know, have the tools we need. So we're really, we're really pleased to be included in, in this. It's, it's a, in, in my book, it's a big deal, so. Anyway, so summer preview tomorrow, it's virtual, eight-thirty to nine-thirty. And, uh, we will have their resort is also gonna present as well as, uh, the town on construction and traffic. And then just a reminder that our annual meeting is June sixteenth, and we'll have Tim Wolfe, who's the director of the Colorado Tourism Office, is gonna be our keynote for that one. So.
Where's the invite for tomorrow's meeting and then for the?
I'll make sure that, um, Peyton has it. I thought that went out to you guys, but if you, if you have a question about it, we'll, we'll, we'll just resend something. resend something.
I came back to so many emails. I just deleted.
I, I, I know.
Probably a bunch of important ones. Okay.
You all get a link tonight. Okay, thanks.
When's Glenwood Canyon closing and for how long?
Every time there's.
When's it gonna rain?
I mean, it's already.
In case it does.
Well, it, it already has with the fire there.
Yeah, yeah, but it's not anything scheduled.
Now, we're, we're planning for the unscheduled ones.
Okay.
You know, just so when it happens, like, everybody's gonna know how to kick into gear depending on who's impacted, and, and that we're all drawing information from the same places.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Lucy. Drive through there. Crazy through there. Okay, well, we have a proclamation, um, for Mental Health Awareness Month, and I'm gonna read in a second. But as a special guest, we have Jen McTamnney from Building Hope, who, uh, showed up to cheer us on, I guess. While I, while I read this. Whereas, every American is affected or impacted by mental health issues either personally or through their friends and family. And whereas, when compared to other Colorado communities, the incidence, incidence of substance abuse and mental health indicators is elevated in Summit County. And as a result, the town is concerned about the impacts of mental illness on the quality of life for our residents. And whereas, although mental illness impacts all people, many of those in lower-income communities receive less care, poorer quality care. And often lack access to linguistically and culturally assess, accessible care. Thereby resulting in mental health disparities, and whereas, some see negative perceptions about mental health care as a significant factor contributing to limited or nonexistent. Access to care, and whereas. Nearly two-thirds of all people with a diagnosable mental illness do not receive mental health treatment due to stigma, lack of community-based resources. Inadequate diagnosis or no diagnosis at all. And whereas, there is a need to improve public awareness of mental illness and to strengthen local and national awareness. So that all those with mental illness may have access and receive adequate and appropriate treatment and support. And whereas, Breckenridge Town Council wishes to enhance public awareness of mental illness. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and town council of the town of Breckenridge, that the month of May twenty twenty-two is mental health awareness in the town of Breckenridge, Colorado.
Thank you. I just wanna thank you. I came tonight really to thank you guys, and thanks for the leadership, frankly. Um, our community is a lot further than we were in twenty sixteen when Patty Casey died of suicide and depression and substance use. And it was because we couldn't talk about it as a community, and we all came together, our municipalities, our nonprofits, the county. And decided that we were gonna do something about this. We weren't gonna wait for the state or the federal government to fix this. And so as a result, now in Summit County, um, we have a network of a hundred and two therapists that people can see with the Building Hope Scholarship. Um, we have connecting events. We have a smart team that's operating twenty-four hours a day and addressing people in crisis where they are, making sure. And doing the best they can to stabilize and then keep them in the community. And it's because of that leadership of our, of our towns and our, and our, and our county government that stood up and said that this was important. And important enough for us to take a stand as a community and put money and, um, and energy and effort into it. And we've come a long way. We still have a long ways to go. Our kids are not all right. We, in March, we had, over half of the M-one holds at the hospital. We're middle schoolers. And it is, um, it's stunning, and, um, the last two years have shown everyone that mental health is part of all of our lives. It's a continuum. We walk every day, and some days are harder than others, and that personal, that, the way that struggle has been personalized for us because of the isolation. And the struggles the last two years, I'm hoping that it really has reduced stigma, so that when we walk down the street, that you hear people talking about how they're battling. Or overcoming their depression, how they're dealing with their anxiety, the same way we talk about our knees. Um, when we have enough physical therapists, like, if we have enough therapists, like, we do physical therapists in this community where I can always get an appointment, I will know that we have gotten where we need to be. So I just want to thank you again for your leadership and highlighting this, because the more we talk about it, the more, especially when leaders talk about it. It, the more accessible it is for everyone else, so thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for the hard work.
Question while you're here, but where do you see the state headed?
Things are so, honestly, things are so in the space of flux right now, where legislation is really coming together around the Office of Behavioral Health. Ask me in about a year, and I'll tell you. I mean, I think there's great improvements being made. I think there's been great work by people in this community serving on task force and really raising up the challenges of rural and frontier and resort areas. Around our economy, our lack of resources, the fact that we have to trap for people to get intensive ca, care, they're, they're miles and miles away. I feel like we're being heard, um, how the rubber meets the road when the bill gets signed and all the other legislative pieces are in place. I think there's still a lot of work to be done, but people are fighting the good fight, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we might get some funding for our local-based, uh, mental health.
Right now, the way things are going, it looks like that the community-based social, um, safety network will have, have counties have more access to those funds. And I will just tell you, we've been incredibly successful in the last two years writing for state grants that were never something we even looked at before. So I think we've, will have pulled in around a million dollars in grants over like a couple of years. Um, and that's what's helping to fund things like, um, there's a new set of services opening up in the medical office building, which will have. Intensive case management and intensive therapy things and, um, medic, medication assistant treatment for substance use, as well as groups and stuff that will be. A much higher level of outpatient than we've seen here, and it's because we've been able to go out and get grants to fund the startup of those organizations that we're not even having to hit the Strong Future Fund. So that we'll be able to continue to use those funds on things that we can't get funding for. There's also, you know, the opioid monies, the first round of it, I'll tell you, is frankly, small, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars across five counties is not very much. But, um, but there's more money around that coming. There's some, some of the, um, pandemic relief dollars will be available. So we're trying, we've, I think what's good now is we have a great team of consultants, um, who used to be part of the, the Office of Behavioral Health. Who are helping us identify grants and opportunities, and we're right now going through a needs assessment process to really look at all the data we've collected over the couple, last couple of years. And build a, build a, a road forward for, um, what we still want, where our gaps are, what the funding we need to support those and sustain those. And then opportunistically go after that and braid all those bits of money together. So it's, um, there's, you know, Vale Health coming to the community is a big deal for us. Colorado Mountain Medical and Eagle Valley Behavioral Health have been fabulous partners, so that is a bright spot, I think, also. Um, I've got a meeting coming up with Children's Hospital. We're hoping we'll lead to some fruition, some new services. But, um, we're just heads down working all the time, trying to do more. I mean, we have to keep beating the drum that we don't have enough therapists. Housing is a huge thing, so thank you for working with us and trying to work to get to some master leases. For, um, professionals who are moving into the community, so we can at least get them here and get them housed for a year. So those things are the big challenges, the same ones that everyone has, frankly. But, uh, you know, this is something that impact, when someone has a mental health crisis, or even if they're struggling with depression, you know, that's impacting employers, families, everyone. And so the healthier we can get everyone by providing access and really making sure that stigma isn't this thing in the way that you're not so, you're not embarrassed about it. Cause it's just, it's just our brains being sick. It's not a big deal, and there's, you know, recovery is happens every day. And, you know, I'm always totally inspired by things like for people who have attempted suicide. Ninety-three percent of those people never attempt again because they get the help they need. And then they go on to like find that next piece in life that helps them go on and thrive. And so this is something we can truly overcome if we can just get people connected with the right services at the right time. And, and what it takes is support from people like you guys, the Tobacco Initiative that helped us, helps us with funding every year is huge. The Strong Future Fund is huge, all these things, because that is what it takes, just like it takes to run a great housing program and childcare program. It is about ca, it is about capital, and I don't mean the buildings. I mean, the capital, the human capital to make that happen, and we need dollars to put towards it to make sure. Because if someone has to choose between rent or, I mean, rent and therapy, or, you know, my kid's soccer and therapy, therapy's always gonna lose at a hundred dollars a week. And so, um, so these services and insurance, we haven't reached parity by any stretch of the imagination between behavioral health and our physical health. And so, um, so everything that we can do to break down those barriers, so people can get the access to the care that they need and the kind of care that they need, that's where our wins are, and so that's what we're shooting for.
Thanks for your work.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
That's right. I really am, um, grateful that our community has the courage to do the work we're doing. And I hope that Building Hope and our work can inspire other communities like us, and so we try to help those guys, too. Um, we work with people at Crest Butte, Routh County, and just really to spread the gospel and say that this is something that's doable and attainable. Um, with the support of your community, and, um, and they're recognizing that they can do it, too, so it's good stuff. Yeah.
It hits home when a week from tonight will be, uh, Summit High will be retiring Toby Guard's jersey.
Jersey, yeah, exactly, and we wanna, don't want to retire any more kids jerseys. We don't want to retire any more young people's skis. We don't want to have to toast people's device. Um, because they died of suicide, which was really depression or anxiety or another disease, some other mental health disease. So it's when suicide happens, when there's no longer, they can no longer be rational about seeking care and help. And so it's just that terrible moment in time, and if we can just get people in that moment, it makes a huge difference. Big win. Everyone at Summit High, um, our staff in English and Spanish has delivered QPR, which is, um, basically CPR for suicide. Um, to every kid in that high school, so, um, there's good work happening.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, uh, let us go to second readings and continued business. And we begin with, uh, Council Bill number ten, series twenty twenty-two. It's an ordinance approving a ground lease with a family and intercultural resource center.
Mayor and Council, this is the second reading of an ordinance that will allow the town to enter into a long-term ground lease with the Family and Intercultural Resource Center. For the purposes of leasing approximately one acre of land from the town for the purposes of building their new. Uh, headquarters building on that property. This is a seventy-five-year. Uh, headquarters building on that property. This is a seventy-five year. Lease uh, to them and uh, there have been no changes since we first discussed this at the last meeting.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions of staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading this evening? No, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move we pass Council Bill number ten, series twenty twenty, the title which has been read into the twenty twenty-two. The title has just been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Roll call please.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right. We have a bunch of first readings. Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you before. Has everybody had a chance to sign those two cards that were going around?
I don't think anyone has.
Just while we're working through this, if you could just pass those around, those are for Aaron and Dennis from uh. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's a good one. Um, all right. First one, Councilman number eleven, series twenty twenty-two. It's an ordinance conforming the town code to the Colorado Clean Indoor Air Act.
Mayor, council and new members of council, um, the first bill tonight is interrelated with all five. We do need to. Take action on each one individually, but I will, if it's okay with you, summarize all five together. Um. The first is um, an update to our local counterpart to the Colorado Clean Indoor Act, mostly cleanup. Um, and updates in conformance with a twenty nineteen state legislation. The second uh, bill tonight is a um, update to the Colorado Retail Tobacco Licensing Law. And getting our local law in line with state law. Um, that is the more substantive of the five changes. And that one will um, make a change to the process to bring retail tobacco licensing in line with liquor licensing, which will be handled through our. Um, LMLA authority. The third one is a reorganization of alcohol and marijuana. What I tried to do with all of these bills is get alcohol, marijuana and tobacco all into the same chapter, just for ease of abuse. And then um, the next one in line is um. Amendments to the jurisdiction of the licensing authority to add the retail tobacco licensing. The next bill is related to a repeal of a general offense having to do with minor in possession of tobacco products, which is. Uh, an important policy change that was made at the state and which our um. Administrative team and our chief of police believe is appropriate for Breckenridge as well. And then the final is um. Adoption of a festival permit scheme. Um, this initial draft is going to have the process handled through the clerk. We wanted to get something in place so that these don't just get issued by the state without us having to say, but we have discussed bringing that back later and having a more robust. Discussion about our local process. Um, if there are any questions, let me know. Otherwise we can just take each one individually.
Excellent. Questions? Nope. All right. Anyone in the public wish to comment on? These, this suite of. Of first readings? No, public hearing is closed. So we're going to have to read these one at a time. So you're just going to do the first one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, is there a motion?
I move on first reading. We pass Council Bill number eleven, series twenty twenty-two, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have first reading Council Bill number twelve, series twenty twenty-two. This is an ordinance amending and relocating retail tobacco licensing. Staff has already presented or in the area, any questions of staff? Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this first reading? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, we move past Council Bill number twelve, series twenty twenty-two, the title which has been read into the record.
Um, and these are all on first reading, so we will do public hearing on second reading.
Oh, I always.
Eric likes to do.
I do public hearing all the time.
Oh, sorry.
Very good.
I'm very. There's a motion. Is there a second? There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Beckerman. Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Dran.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have a first reading Council Bill number thirteen, series twenty twenty-two. This is an ordinance reorganizing. And relocating alcohol beverage, alcoholic beverages and marijuana licensing regulations. Staff has already presented. Are there any questions? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, we move past Council Bill number thirteen, series twenty twenty-two, the title which has been read into the record.
Second. There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, first reading Council Bill number fourteen, series twenty twenty-two. It's an ordinance amending the general offenses of Breckenridge Town Code pertaining to the conduct of a minor in possession of tobacco. Staff's already presented. Are there any questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment? Nobody's left.
Public closes the hearing. Is there a motion?
First reading, we move we pass Council Bill number fourteen, series twenty twenty-two, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
We have a first reading Council Bill number fifteen, series twenty twenty-two. This is an ordinance authorizing town clerk to administratively approve fest- festival permits. Is that part of this?
Yes.
Draw the line.
There.
Staff's already presented. Any questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, I move past Council Bill number fifteen, series twenty twenty-two, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Well, it was late, wasn't it?
Yeah.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I don't think she's pro tem material.
Roll call.
I don't think.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right. We have Council Bill number sixteen, series twenty twenty-two. It's an ordinance conforming the code to the chap, to the to. To the charter pertaining to municipal court.
Uh, Mayor and Council, this is really in the nature of cleanup. When the materials for the reappointment of Judge Allen came through, it gave me an opportunity to look at the code. And there are a couple outdated provisions, um, having to do with bonding requirements and um. There is also a very outdated um, provision that is now prohibited by taper. So I just took the opportunity to clean this up as we were looking at the um, municipal judge framework. If you have any questions, maybe happy to answer them.
Are there questions?
No, no housekeeping.
Anyone in the public wish to comment on Council Bill number sixteen? No, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, I move we pass Council Bill number sixteen, series twenty twenty-two, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have a resolution number ten, series twenty twenty-two. It's a resolution appointing the presiding judge and fixing their compensation.
Um, this really speaks for itself. This is the reappointment of Judge Allen. If you have any questions, let me know. And he was here tonight to um, express his continued interest in his performance of the duties.
We're going to miss him when he's gone one day. Old buck. Any questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution? The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass resolution number ten, series twenty twenty-two. A resolution appointing the presiding judge and fixing their compensation.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I'm exhausted.
Roll call.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have a request to approve compensation for outside counsel.
This is just um, a requirement of the charter that you set the rates of special counsel. This is Kissinger and Feldman. Ken Feldman handles. Issues around telecommunications and franchise agreements. There's nothing um, that we anticipate that will require any extraordinary amount of time. With um, Ken right now, but we wanted to be able to tap into his experience as necessary.
Do we just do this as normal with a, with a vote?
Yeah.
All right. Any questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this? No. Uh, is there a motion?
I move, we, I move, I move, we request for approval. I'm, I, I say we approve.
Just thinking on your feet, buddy.
I, I have moved that we approve their request to have a compensation for outside counsel. I've signed on this card.
There's a motion. You want a second to Kelly?
Second. You know, everyone can second.
You know what the motion.
New people, you guys can second.
Roll call please.
Yes. Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Um, I have made a uh, request of the council to nominate Kelly as our mayor pro tem. Any discussion?
Not when she looks at me like that, no.
I just, all in favor of Kelly as mayor pro tem?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
I'd oppose. There you go.
Well done.
All right. That's it. We have planning commission decisions. Any call ups this evening? Planning commission decisions stand as presented. Report to the town manager and staff. Rick, anything to add?
Nothing additional.
Standing. Uh, we have a report of the mayor and council members. Uh, we didn't have any caster MMC. I did have one Jody from the skier today. Um, had an excellent conversation about traffic and parking and uh, equity. Which is a big um, deal for the, their company right now. They've got a big diversity push. Carol's going to follow up with Jody and talk to her about what they're doing. Um, they think they've been very successful this year. I have noticed it in town. So uh, so kudos to them. Uh, we also had a brief conversation about housing and they are. Interested in doing something with us.
Nice.
If we have a project that's uh. That's the problem. We can't do it with Gorman because we're already in the middle of a deal with Gorman. We got to look for. Whatever our next project's going to be. So we had a great discussion. It was. It's actually nice to be in this space with the uh, with the skier right now that we're sort of moving in the same direction for the most part. So. Um, open space.
We had a, a meeting last night. Um, Kirsten came in and talked to uh, to the new members as well as uh, the KG vets. Um, about uh, the norms, um, norms and uh, and that was enlightening. I, I didn't know most of the stuff she said. Um, and uh, we kind of went over the, the master plan. Um, and um. It uh, it got mixed reviews and in, but DTJ is a kind of a hearing the. Uh, thoughts and they're going to work on it. They, they, we talked about some specific items, but a lot of it is going to be left to uh. All the, all the BOSAC members were asked to write a letter or email to end with their suggestions and I. I don't think there's a problem with the council doing the same if anyone's concerned um, about the format or the content. Uh, it should be done by Sunday, um, as, as far as uh, comments. Um, talked about that and uh, and I have to say that two new staff members were impressive. So that was, that was good. So we're kind of a mix of um. Faded glory and, and new blood. So.
Awesome. Tourism.
I haven't started yet. I had my first meeting Thursday.
Okay, history. We have, was anybody on history? Was that?
I was also doing.
That's awesome. Creative arts?
Yeah, we had a um, a uh, finance committee meeting today. Yeah, and I, I thought it was really good. Rick, jump in if uh. If you'd like, I um, you know, I think they heard us in terms of reformatting their financials and to make them a little more transparent and. Help us kind of understand the different buckets of their organization. Um, they've divided it into administration. Buildings, you know, property man, the management side of it, programming and the um, Arts District Campus. Um, and I, I really thought it was a huge improvement. Um. The Tammer also went over um, some of the strategic direction of the organization. Which I, I thought um, there'd been a lot of thought put into. I, I thought that was good. Um, and you know, they, they sound to have a pretty robust programming schedule for the summer. So. Um, I thought it was a good meeting. Anything to add, Rick?
No, I think they have a good plan for how there has been some of their recovery dollars that they got that'll benefit us in the. Long run with some, a new, you know, kind of a new look of the website and some. A few things they want to do it. Well, Masonic Hall, which I think has kind of really helped drive a little more and understand what's going on in the Arch District. So.
Great. Good stuff.
Yeah, I always really good.
Uh, events.
Did not have a meeting.
Childcare.
We didn't have a meeting.
How are the children going to survive?
These directors are so good. They're so, so good.
She's going to drop a hammer on childcare. Workforce housing.
Uh, we, I think we went over it last meeting. We haven't a meeting since.
And social equity.
We did have a meeting. Um, we welcomed a new commission member, those taken errancy. Um, so great to have that other voice. Um, I think this committee is really getting into the swing of things, reviewing what's upcoming on the town agenda, being able to provide input. Um, we also reviewed some of the commission's goals and started to create subgroups, particularly with the um, kind of. A subgroup in celebrating diversity. So we do have a couple upcoming things between um. June tea, Juneteenth, Pride Month, a couple other things. So we're getting this group together to really think about actionable items and how we want to. Celebrate diversity. Um, next meeting will be a big meeting where we'll finalize largely our work with the consultant, both the equity blueprint. Um, the timeline and who are owning each of the goals and then um, the lens, the equity lens. So a lot of good stuff next meeting.
Great. Nice job.
When's the next meeting?
It is, um. I'll tell you, May twenty. Eight ish, that first Monday, that Monday. And that's another question though. Um, Dick, will you also be on the committee still?
Uh, no, I have not been assigned to it, but I can come to this last one if you would like.
Um, it's up to you. I think it would be valuable to wrap up that discussion and also I'll be out of town. So someone with historic knowledge would be.
I'm happy to.
Thank you.
If I'm, if I'm around, I'll have to double check, but I think I am.
Excellent. All right. Other matters.
I got two quick ones. Thank you, sir. Would love to just make sure that as a council, we keep uh, human capital employees at the forefront of our mind. Um, certainly through COVID and all the challenges, the, the leadership team out there in the audience and. And the town manager, I think have done an incredible job and want to just keep the human capital at the forefront. So. That's just a plug there. And then the second one is just to plant a seed on this idea of a walkable river um, from the troll maybe to. Um, maybe to city market that we maybe start looking at as a investment in capital along the riverfront. So just want to plant those ideas. Thanks.
Thank you, Todd. Nope. Kelly?
Yep.
Just, I may talked a little bit about it at supper. Just want to keep our eye on the ball as far as fire, uh. Fire danger and, and you know, obviously the sheriff who uh. Kind of lists a fire reading, but you know, I think this is could be a scary summer. So. Let's um, I don't know. I'd like, I'd love to go to it, go to it sooner than later, but of course that's not up to us, but just.
I will always, you know, just always share your concerns and questions and will, you know, we touch base, the chief meets with them. Weekly to look at where we're at, what's going on. So I think, you know, it's just a lot of focus will be on it this year and we can. Uh, this, we'll just communicate.
Yeah.
Tomorrow that we're going to have, I think James will be there and uh, Chief, somebody from the PD, I think on the spring runoff. Meeting that we do to kind of look at what we anticipate coming out of the different basins and what we might see on that. So.
I'll bring it up at the BTO as well because um, you know, we, we. I'll bring it up at the BTO as well, because, you know, we obviously, there's no resources from the Forest Service or, you know, the local PD to enforce.
Yeah.
But it's horrifying. I mean, you guys all know it when you're riding your bike or whatever. I mean, there are just fires everywhere from these campsites all over the valley. It's scary.
Well, Jim Keating did say that he thought the most effective thing was having those roaming.
I think they're still doing that.
Yeah. So we should make sure that they have.
Might be paying some money.
Which is fine. Yeah, I'm totally fine with that.
Encourage them to go to the.
Rangers, right?
Yeah. The high volume camping spots like Pennsylvania and Swan and all that stuff.
I, we were skiing Solstice, the 21st of June last year. And on the way back, someone, we saw a huge campfire and and I, you know, called, I knocked them out. And and Buddy behind driving behind me, they were there and about 15 minutes later.
So.
Not screwing around.
Yeah.
Awesome. Awesome, anything else? Carol?
Yes, I wanted to throw it out to council somewhere as to what we've done in the past for different communities struck by natural tragedy to talk about the situation in Ukraine, where it has been dragging on for some time and it's a terrible humanitarian crisis. And I think it'd be great if we consider donating similar to what we've done in the past, an organization that focuses on humanitarian efforts.
I'm down with that.
Yeah.
An amount?
What have we done in the past?
We do 10,000. That what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Did you have a group in mind or you want to suggest?
No, I've been I've been donating to the World Food Kitchen, to Jose Andres. They do a ton of work.
That's a great organization. Give me your market for you.
I think you can, I mean, that's I've written that on the.
Want to go?
Yeah.
What is it, the world?
Yeah, he's the one that's been.
Food Kitchen?
Feeding, he's fed over a million people, a million meals.
We do need to take action on our donations.
World Central Kitchen.
That's what it is.
World Central Kitchen. Do we have to do that as vote? All in favor of making a charitable charitable donation to the World Central Kitchen in the name of Ukraine for $10,000?
I.
All in favor? I, any opposed? Unopposed? Thank you for keeping us honest. Good job. Jay, any?
Kind of pales in comparison to the what we just discussed, but I've had some input from business owners on the north side of town about the East Sawmill employee lot and just the signage there not being super clear. And we have like a little A frame right now that says employee parking. And just something to put on our radar to address. I think if you look at like the municipal building parking, there it's very obvious and no one parks there. On the East Sawmill, we have these little table tent, sandwich board signs and in the Sawmill lot. And it's just not as effective. And so if that's something that we could look at at some point.
Same thing in Tiger Ridge, actually.
You're getting it at the eye level. There's been studies done that has to be high enough to register.
Yeah. Let us, East Sawmill and.
Employee car.
The horseshoe.
The little horseshoe.
Tiger Ridge and the horseshoe.
We could donate our cryptocurrency to World Central Kitchen.
Who's that other card?
Did everybody get it?
Anything else for the good of the order? Adjourn. A nice job, new council people and returning council people.